Y'all?
Slam it down.
Well, good enough. Okay, first on the agenda is the airport. Mark?
Good morning.
It's a group presentation.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Mark Spry and I'm the Deputy Director of the St. Pete Clearwater International Airport. And on behalf of Tom Juiceberry, who cannot be attending today because he's up in an airport conference up in Canada, it is a pleasure to present to you our 2018 doing things. But with any successful business, it's just not done by one person. It's collaborated by a team of members. And when you give these team members and opportunities and possibilities, they all do great things. So I'd like to introduce you to some of our excellent team members.
Hi, Michelle Routh, Public Relations for the airport.
Hi.
Kathleen, Real Estate.
Erin Johnson, Airport Operations Manager.
And Yvette Ailey, Deputy Director for Finance and Administration.
Thank you. But we also have, who denotes the air service development and marketing teams. We have custodial staff. We have engineering. We have facilities. We have our firefighting and rescue, as well as our own information technology. Along with that, we have the airport fire and rescue and our operations divisions that operate 24 hours a day and seven days a week. So who are we? Well, St. Pete Clearwater National Airport is a small hub commercial service airport, serves the greater Tampa Bay community, and operates as a self-sustaining enterprise fund. We provide facilities and services supporting economic growth. In 2018, we had an independent study with an economic impact. And that report supported that Pinellas County International Airport has over $1 billion into the Pinellas County, as well as supports over 7,000 full-time equivalent jobs. We increased our air service destinations with three new cities and one new airline. We increased to Nashville, Tennessee, as well as Albany, New York. And then we obtained a new ultra-low-cost Canadian carrier named Flare Airlines. Altogether, we provide nonstop service to a total of 59 cities, 56 domestic, and three international. We're in our fourth consecutive year breaking passengers' record. In 2018, we had a 9% growth after five consecutive years of double-digit growth. St. Pete Clearwater National Airport is the ninth-largest of Florida's 20 commercial service airports. And in the calendar year '17, we were ranked 93rd busiest airport out of the 506 commercial airports in the United States. And calendar year '18 will be up into number 86. How we maintain and increase non-air corp revenue? We have 36 industrial leases and 20 permits. And we still have two remaining underdeveloped airport properties known as the former AirCo, as well as the Turtle Club. The 2.3 increase that you see from the fiscal year '17 to '18 is because some of our leases have escalation clauses built in into the Consumer Price Index. In fiscal year '18, our operating profit is estimated to be around $5.5 million. That includes over an 8% increase in concession revenue due to our passenger growth and increase in sales. Our revenue per passenger has increased over 15% to $15.95. That is, the revenue PI generates for every in-plane passenger. In contrast, the airline cost per passenger is at a low of $1.98. That means that that is the cost per in-plane passenger that the airline has to pay. With the increasing revenue while maintaining the low airline costs, the airlines can maximize air service growth for our community. The airport continues to maintain a very healthy and solid fund balance. Some of the explanation in the spikes and valleys is that from fiscal year '16 to '17, we introduced a new charge called the Customer Facility Charges, CFCs. That is a common charge built into the rental cars. As well as the drop between fiscal year '17 to '18, it was an anticipated and planned loss of revenue due to the landslide construction project operating more parking shuttles to our parking lots. So how do we give back to the community? We hosted four veteran honor flights, known as the Welcome Home Flights, celebrating this year for a collective total of 34. We're also into the Big Brothers, Big Sisters Workplace Mentor Program. We currently have 16 employees/tenants participating in a two-year program that provides Clearwater High School students mentor opportunities at PI. We're in our third year of the program. One of the success stories that we had is that one of our first graduates was a high school graduate of Clearwater, applied for Pinellas County College, was accepted. We had a summer internship program. He applied to that. He met all the credentials. We were able to give him a summer internship so he can continue to prosper in his career in aviation. We're also members of various chambers of commerce organizations and sponsor many events. What you don't see here is we also assisted with our PI family that was affected by the government shutdown. With the Public Relations Director facilitating an awesome program to give back, we started a food pantry. But then we figured out that it was not only a food pantry that they needed. It turned into a needs pantry. It needs for gas to go for those employees to get from their homes to the airport. It was a needs for their children to have diapers and two formulas. Also, we just did do that alone. We did it with the fixed base operators, Signature Flight Support chipped in, Allegiant Airlines chipped in, as well as United States Coast Guard and local businesses.
Excuse me, real quick question. Quick question for you. And under community, I put it under community a little bit, but maybe you could speak to your group that you, the sound abatement group that you get together with, or your community group, Safety Harbor group, you know? Maybe you could talk a little bit to that and how that's going.
Sure. The Noise Abatement Task Force meets quarterly. And I'm the chair and I meet with them. And currently, right now, we have a 92% compliance rate with Allegiant Airlines flying the noise abatement procedures. Out of that, we have also escalated that, the commitment for Allegiant Airlines. Allegiant Airlines flies one of their corporate members from Las Vegas, and he attends every single noise abatement task force meeting.
Well, good.
Madam Chair. I want to get back to those families that were affected by the shutdown. How many were there that were affected? Do you know?
Yeah, TSA actually has, just strictly at PI, close to around 100 team members.
And have they fully recovered now?
They're back at work, yes. Hopefully tomorrow, there won't be another shutdown. But one of the greatest things that our team was able to accomplish is not only were we empathetic and attentive to their needs, but the call-out rate was nationally 3% to 5%. Our call-out rate for our TSA families was close to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Please thank them for their service to our community. Thank you.
Absolutely. Other things to serve our customers. Our customer service training program for all airport business employees is known as our STAR program. STAR stands for Smile, Teamwork, Attentive, and Resource. It recognizes those with a luncheon as well as with a gift card. We added an IRA program. It's for visually impaired passengers. It's a simple program. They know about it, and it uses their smart devices. We say it takes them from their curb side to gate side. With your smart device, they can actually enter the airport, walk through the terminal, know where the bathrooms are, know where the concessions are, know where the ticket counters are, going through the gates areas, going through the checkpoint areas, and it physically drops them exactly where the gate, where they need to be. We know that it has been successful because we already have some of our visually impaired passengers using this program.
I have a question about that. Is that just iPhones, or is it all smartphones?
It's smartphones, as well as there's Google-style glasses that they can also purchase. And it almost walks them through their whole entire, yep, through the whole entire process. It maps out our whole entire airport for them.
That's pretty cool.
Do you still have a Google? I do. But I went to this presentation at Lighthouse for the Blind, and it was all about Apple products, so. Commissioner.
We also provide over 20 educational tours and presentations for the schools, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, leadership hosting events, civic and other educational groups all throughout the year. We also can't forget about our wonderful train volunteers, who collectively in 2018 volunteered over $2,000 for our customers.
Appreciate it.
We're still having an airport master plan. It's an important process for our short, mid, and long-range planning. We already hosted three open house meetings with public help to present informational progress. We still have a dedicated website, and it still contains information regarding the master plan process, as well as all the presentations, and it still has open where the community and citizens can still comment. The outcome will be to develop a capital improvement program for the next five, 10, and 15 years for both the airside and landside areas of the airport. And this should be completed by fall of 2019. And now we're building things. With every construction, there are sometimes challenges, but with every challenge, there's also forward growth. So let me tell you a little bit about what we're doing. We have a terminal renovation project in progress. That's going to give us 12,000 square feet of new wait areas, as well as upgraded restrooms, expanded TSA checkpoints, as well as new concession areas. Part of it already opened in 2018, in November of 2018, and the remainder will open up spring of this year. We have a full, complete, new inline baggage system. We're utilizing our largest but underutilized ticketing area known as Ticketing A. And what's that going to accomplish? It's going to have a brand-new state-of-the-art checked screen process for your checked bags. And when it's fully developed, it will be able to handle over 1,000 checked screen bags an hour. And that should be completed by winter of 2020. Due to the FDOT Gateway Project, the gateway is going to be realigning our entrance and exit into the airport. Therefore, we took advantage of that, and we did a full, complete recirculation, a new way of getting into the short-term parking lot, a new way of getting into the long-term parking lot. We expanded spaces in both of those lots, expanded spaces in the employee lot, and also expanded spaces into the rental car lot. That should be completed by winter of 2020. We have a Customs and Border Protection under construction to comply with the latest 2017 standards that will have an opportunity to open up more international communities into the St. Pete Clearwater National Airport. That should be completed by fall of 2019. Due to the FDOT Gateway Project, our maintenance facilities across the Roosevelt Boulevard, because of that construction project, it is no longer going to become efficient for our work crew to go from the airport to the facility and then back. So therefore, we're bringing that facility back into the airport, and that should be completed by fall of 2019. And finally, we have a new security system to better enhance the safety and security of our passengers, and that should be completed by summer of 2019. All these projects collectively have over $55 million in capital improvement programs, and they're fully funded by other passenger facility charges, either by FAA funds, FDOT grants, Department of Homeland Security funds, and airport user fees.
Excuse me. What is the status of your concession enhancements at the airport?
We are currently in the negotiations. We hope to bring this to the board by next month, and then we'll be able to negotiate where they need to go. So we're hoping to have development in around late spring to very early summer of 2019. And finally, we have a 130-acre airco development. We're doing an environmental assessment so we can start developing this area. We have received over $100,000 FDOT grant and currently completing an environmental assessment required by the FAA before the property can be developed, and that should be completed by spring of 2019. When this property is fully developed, the projected fair market value is going to be estimated around $1.5 million in self-sustaining operational revenue for the airport. And finally, we thank you, not only for your ongoing support, but your assistance in all that we do. Happy Valentine's Day. Any questions?
Happy Valentine's Day. Did you bring candy?
I did.
Where's the flowers?
But they confiscated it.
Where's the flowers?
No flowers, no candy?
I will give it to you.
When they come back with the budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here, and obviously, we're all incredibly proud and pleased with everything that's going on at the airport. A couple of questions. I know that we were in the middle of some, and I don't know if you mentioned it, the improvements as far as our international check-in processing in Homeland. We were waiting for some process there, some, I don't know whether it was personnel or capital. Where are we with that?
Of the Customs and Border Protection? It's still ongoing. The project is, should be completed by, like I said, by the fall of this year. And we're just working out some of the, due to the government shutdown, some of the delays occurred. But the, I guess the hiccups that we have have already been worked out.
Okay. Something that we've talked a lot about lately, and Mr. Burton is really focused on, is kind of these breaking down the silos of departments and county administration. And so I wanted to just get a feel, and I'm sorry, Mr. Juiceberry and your marketing person isn't here to kind of do this, but I want to try and understand how you will go about attracting airlines and when you're out trying to lock down another airline to service. And for example, we just signed Flare, which goes to Winnipeg, yet Tampa signs Swoop, which goes to Toronto, which is more of our natural target audience. So I was just curious how much conversation you have with economic development, how much you have with our CVB folks, when you're targeting who to go out and try and get for our airport.
Funny, the reason why they're not here is both of them are actually at a routes conference up in Canada right now. And that's the opportunity to speak to all these airlines that come in. Our team works collaboratively with all of the resources that Pinellas County has. Also, to attract new airlines, airlines in order to come, yeah, that's great to go, say, to Toronto. But when if you already, if the market's already flooded, then the airlines are not going to be attracted to go into those cities. So therefore, our attractiveness is, again, the airline cost per passenger. It's low, and it's attractive to utilize our facilities. Also, when a new airline wants to come in, it's all about infrastructure and all about, you know, how we can accommodate that. With all going projects, we're kind of, we want to like to get these done first. But we still have room to grow. We still have room for these airlines to come in. Also, when new airlines come in, we target more the ultra-low-cost carrier traffic. So therefore, when they look at it, they're looking at not is how can we add another route that's already flooded from Tampa International, or from Orlando, or from even Sarasota. We target those cities to where they can make a profit, and there's not that many airlines that are already doing that route.
Sure. And maybe it would be a good work session topic, or maybe I'm the only one who is interested, and I can come out and spend a day with you all, and you can do a little deeper dive. But I'm just fascinated by, you know, again, we're not going to go out and steal Delta from Tampa or someone like that, but there are a lot of flights that just go once or twice a week. Valaris, Enerjet, you know, the ones to Canada that we've talked about. So I'm just curious about how that all works with our CVB folks, targeting. And so I know there's another layer that I'm not seeing, but I'd just love to get some more information on that at some point in time. Again, if there's not an interest by the board then...
I would, Madam Chair, Commissioner Walsh.
Well, I do think that's a good idea. And if y'all haven't taken the tour lately, I think I missed the last round of tours, but I did go out a couple of months ago to make up for that and got the view from the tower.
Excellent.
And when you do that, you can just see all the construction and really understand that gateway project a lot better. But I do agree with Commissioner Justice on getting that info. I just wanted to thank you and the team. Y'all have done an incredible job. I came across an old master plan as I was cleaning up my office yesterday. And almost, we routinely now talk about 2 million passengers. And the goal back then was to get to a million passengers. And y'all are just doing an incredible job with our airport. And, you know, it really serves our economic engine here in Pinellas County. And we've got our tourist council coming up next. One question I had for you, though, did you mention the Turtle Club and what the status of that is and what the plan for that is?
Our Director of Real Estate Marketing, there is some attractiveness to other businesses right now. But there is also infrastructure changes, you know, from the sewer being out there to electric being out there. So as we continue to work on that, yes, there is some interest in the development of that. But also, some of the, reaction is an equal opposite reaction. There's also looking at, there's businesses that are looking at, well, what's the gateway going to be doing it to maybe affect that area? So, but it's still an attractive piece of property, and we're still pursuing it.
Are we still renting it out for car storage now, or?
No, we actually, no. We actually built a temporary parking lot closer to the terminal that houses about a little over 800 parking spots.
Okay. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lo.
Yes, Mark, I'm really interested in what Commissioner Justice brought up in terms of how you make your selections. And I'm also curious, because I just can't, I know there's a reason why we don't explore more international opportunities, and doesn't it have to do with some kind of a FAA agreement with TIA?
No.
Am I, what is the reason?
No. Currently, right now, the reason why some of our Customs and Border Protection renovations that we're doing, we could only accept what was called pre-clearance. That is, they actually clear coming into the United States from their originating point, not from, not into St. Pete Clearwater National Airport. So that means if you go through Toronto, you're already going through customs clearances, United States custom clearances. You depart Toronto, and you're arriving in what is almost as if you're a domestic carrier.
Right. But my point is that we do have a strong market in Central and South America as well, correct? I think, yeah.
Yes.
And we don't try to cultivate flights down there, do we?
Well, we will now, because with this Customs and Border Protection project, we will be able to accept flights departing, and they'll be able to do a full, complete federal inspection clearance at our airport after this completion of the Customs and Border Protection.
And when will that be done again?
That will be done around fall of this year.
Oh, all right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I too wanted to echo the comments about the great job you and your team are doing. So, you know, keep up the great work and really enjoy the community outreach with the veterans. And that's just, if you, you know, everybody out there who gets, has a chance to go to those events, they're just wonderful. All the hype waiting for the vets to come back is great, but then when they come back, it's a really neat experience. So I just had a couple of questions. It looked like on Slide 5, where it says "nonstop city served." In '17, there were 62, and in 2018, there were 11, so it was a 60% reduction.
It looked like on Slide 5, where it says non-stop city served in '17, there were 62, and in '18, there's 59. I'm assuming the '18 with 59 mean that includes the three new non-stop services. So without that, we would have had 56, and so there's a little bit of a decline there. The next slide up, there is a slowdown in the increase of annual passengers, and then, and then in the Slide 7, no, Slide, excuse me, Slide 8, I think you discussed a little bit why the profit was down. But do you, do you have any overall concerns about those kind of changes and trends that we've seen up to now?
Yeah.
Maybe you can comment on that.
Absolutely. I don't. And the reason why there's a little bit of slowing growth is Allegiant Airlines committed to get rid of all their MD-80s and commit to get a full complete Airbus fleet. Well, they still were committing to get rid of their MD-80s, but what happened was they weren't attracting as many airplanes coming in for replacement. So they had to do a little bit of slower growth into our airport until they can get full complete with all their updated airplanes.
Are they all updated now?
There is not one MD-80 into their fleet. We have been operating an all Airbus fleet since spring of 2018.
Now, I think that's really significant that we, I don't want to put any bad karma out there in the universe, but it's...
I don't want to be either, Commissioner.
No, but it's just great news that there are no hiccups with Allegiant that we've been reading about, right? It's just kind of refreshing. So thank you for all that work as well.
And that's a commitment that, not only that our noise-making task force have on to that, but also their commitment to Allegiant, that they do want to become, they are our Pinellas County Homegrown Airport.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the information.
Commissioner Walsh?
Madam Chair, one other quick one. I guess because I'm sitting in Mark's old seat, I'll come up with bad puns, but this is a 100,000-foot level question.
Wow, that's really up there.
It wasn't bad. I mean, so...
Does Allegiant fly that high?
I don't think so.
No.
So, and this is, and I know you can't answer this quickly, but in our air transportation model, we've always talked about PI and TIA being complementary to each other. And you even described PI as being a small hub commercial service international airport, works well with TIA. Where does Albert Widded and the Clearwater Air Park, I know they're not commercial, but where do they fit in our transportation model? What purpose do they serve?
We'll start with Clearwater. Clearwater Airport serves just the recreational and general aviation. You have an airplane, you want to fly in and out. That's a great little airport. It's known as what is called an uncontrolled airport, meaning it does not have an air traffic control tower. Does not mean it's unsafe. There's policies and rules and regulations. I was a nine-year air transport pilot before I switched from the airline side to the airport side, so I'm very well diverse into an airport like Clearwater Airport. So there is a need.
And you call it a recreational?
It's a recreational general aviation...
Okay.
...airport. Albert Widded, it's, it can accommodate not only general recreational airports of people, again, having their own airplane, they're downtown St. Pete, but also it's for the smaller jets that can come in and out that have, might have businesses right there that into the downtown St. Pete area. But just due to the geography of the airport, as well as they just don't have the runway length, air carriers can't fly in and out of Albert Widded, so...
Are there any other small airports like that in Pinellas, or?
I don't think in Pinellas.
But Clearwater has one.
The Clearwater Air Park, there's another one besides that?
There's Albert Widded, Clearwater, ourselves...
Oh, I'm thinking the more signatures, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know. I would have to get back.
Madam Chair?
That's it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Long? Don't they, thank you, Madam Chair, don't they also have a flight training school down at Albert Widded?
Oh, actually, all of them do. Albert Widded has flight training. We have flight training, as well as Clearwater Air Park has flight training.
Clearwater Air Park, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's kind of recreational, a flight, someone who, you know, wants to fly, and they go down to Albert Widded, can they just come and go at PI if they want to?
Absolutely. Yeah. But it's also space. It's also, it's like, it's like you need a driveway if you have an airplane. So once, once these folks that have these airplanes, it's all about cost, too. Albert Widded or Clearwater Air Park might only charge, you know, $10 a day for, to park an airplane, where some of our FBOs, fixed base operators, the airport itself does not, we're not in the business of having that. So it would be our fixed base operator. So they, they might operate that where it might be $20. So it's all cost and balances for these pilots.
Thank you.
Last question. Is Clearwater owned by the city?
By the city of Clearwater, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Keep up the great... Okay, next we have Convention and Visitors Bureau, Mr. Dean. We have to give this guy a hard time now. Don't worry.
Good morning. I almost completed my second week now, so I'm glad to be back. Thank you so much for your support, too. It's been, it's been a whirlwind in the last 10 days or so, and I've learned a lot about the county and the support that we get from the county, so thank you so much for your support and for all the support we get from the other organizations throughout the county. And I've got some of my team here this morning. I have our Chief Operating Officer, Tim Ramsburger, here.
Morning.
And Leroy Bridges, who's our VP of Digital and Communications, both represent...
Morning.
...our team back in the office, and we have a very motivated and small team, actually, with 52 full-time equivalents, producing a lot of great work that I found in a very short period of time. They're doing really good work, and I'm awfully proud to be part of their team. And as you know, we're the, you know, we're the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the accredited destination marketing organization for Pinellas County, fully funded by the bed tax, by our tourists that visit us, and our primary objective is to market the county as a tourist destination for leisure, meeting, sports, and film production. And we have small groups leading all those efforts, and they're very effective in what they're doing. In addition, we, to our local office, we have some contracted sales and PR reps in DC, in Chicago, New York, the UK, Germany, and South America. So we cover the world in trying to drive tourism to our region, and why couldn't we? We have the best destination in the world. And all of the, all the information that's generated by our CBB and the metrics that we have in terms of our performance and the research that we have has now been launched to a website that you'll see at the bottom of this next screen. Oop, let me go back. That's partners dot, visit stpeaclearwater.com. So we're trying to make a concerted effort to make our information more available and more transparent, and you'll hear more about that in a coming slide or two. Getting ahead of myself. We are the number-one tourist destination in, on the Gulf Coast, and we assist in attracting and retaining air service through the airport that we just heard about, and both of our airports here in the region, and we have over 110 airports that serve us nonstop and that really serves to help us with tourism in our region, and that's very much appreciated. We partner with local, regional, national, and international stakeholders, primarily hotels, municipalities, chambers, attractions, events, to grow our destination and create jobs in this, in this county. In addition, we support high-profile events, certainly the elite events, by providing marketing dollars, and our budget this year is just over $1.5 million, funding 11 elite events. We work directly with event organizers and our staff to ensure that our marketing initiatives generate unacceptable ROI for those elite events, and we support the capital projects as well that attract visitors. The second round of the Tourist Development Capital Project Funding Program is currently underway, and we have six contracts totaling nearly $82 million that have been approved so far in the initial cycle, and we partner with the real estate management to oversee and manage those contract payments. In addition, we currently, you know, we certainly generate a lot of employment in the area. The 2016 Labor Department reports approximately 103,000 Pinellas County jobs are created through tourism, and that translates to almost $5 billion in wages.
Madam Chair?
You can see our source markets on this slide, yes?
Not to give you a hard time.
Please do.
But I have a real problem with those six contracts totaling $82 million, because last year, members, if you might remember, Dennis Long stood right there where you're standing now and said that we were out of money. So I'm very anxious to hear how we're going to fund these $82 million worth of, he said we were out of money, projects. Yes, we had used it all up last year, remember?
I think those are the ones he's talking about.
And the $83 million in contracts.
If you look at the timelines of how those are spent, there's this difference.
Yeah, if you can.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think I could provide a quick answer to that. What Jim just reported on was the initial cycle two years ago, the $82 million.
Well, okay that he did say that. There you go.
Sorry about that.
The current applications that we just closed January 15th that are under review right now, including the Phillies at whatever you decide that amount is, the ask is 40 million. We had four applicants totaling $22 million. Tampa Bay Watch at about $300,000, I'm going off the top of my head here. We have the American, sorry, the History Museum, St. Petersburg at the Approach to the Pier, they're asking for, I believe, $2.2 million. American Craftsman Museum, which got funded in the first cycle, is back for a $2 million ask, and the Dolly Museum at 17.5.
So it's 22 million plus the 40?
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's spread over five applications.
Madam Chair, could you send us a summary of those, those five?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, I'm not done, but I'm going to save it because it's new, and I do feel a little sorry for it.
We'll certainly, we'll certainly share the details of that with you, and I'm sure that we can do that. You know, we want to make sure that we're transparent and we all are on the same page with that. The markets that we, that we, that we support and certainly go after are obviously our US domestic markets, but internationally, we certainly focus on the UK and Ireland, the Scandinavian markets, Germany, Central Europe, Canada, and Latin America is a new and emerging market for us. And then, you know, we have our traditional advertising, both regionally in the state of Florida, nationally, and internationally, and over the next couple of slides, I'll show you some examples of the marketing campaigns that we use to advertise in those markets. Here you can see an example of a panel at baggage claim at Tampa International Airport, and certainly the volume at Tampa International Airport, and the airport here has grown, as we've just seen in their presentation, and I think Tampa International's up to almost 20 million passengers annually and growing. So we want to make sure that we have a significant presence in our airports. As you can see on this slide...
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes, please.
I've always wondered why we advertise in our own airport.
International travelers coming, they're already here, and we don't, we don't know if they're going to Orlando, or they're staying in Hillsborough County, and certainly, we want to create awareness. And I've, you know, tried to exercise that campaign throughout my career with our airports, both in Orlando and in Tampa, for the attractions that I once worked for, and so I think we want to do the same here for our destination, our hotels, and, you know, the destination, our beaches.
So we want them to go west to northeast. Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
We have good presence, and we want to make sure that we continue to do that. I spent yesterday with our, our marketing agency going over our plans for the spring and developing our plans into the summer, and we're going to continue to play offense, if you will, and make sure that we have adequate presence. You can see on this slide that we wrap buses. This is an example, you know, in the Orlando market, we certainly focus on the Orlando market, and it's our number-one feeder market. We call it Beaches of Orlando, and currently living in Orlando, when I'm not here, I see a lot of Visit St. Pete, and it's, it's working very well. We have I-4 billboard advertisement. We work with West Local NBC Station in Orlando, and you can see one of the bus wraps that that runs around the Orlando streets every day. Tampa is our third-largest year-round feeder market behind New York, by the way. Love the Beaches, you can see, this is one of our New York campaigns, and we have 661 million impressions in New York City. It's an important market for us. As I said, it's one of our top three, and we do subway branded trains, we do commuter rail in Long Island, Metro North in New Jersey, double-decker buses, and this isn't an urban panel wrap that you see, and certainly in the winter months, when we focus on the New York markets, it makes a big impact and drives awareness for the New York market, and we're making a lot of impressions there. In addition to that, we have a national campaign that's, that's really featured through NPR, and so we're not focused on just our key markets, but we, we try to, try to create awareness across the country, and NPR is a great vehicle to do that, and the marketing team and our agency have really leveraged NPR to get that done, and you can see some of the examples of the programming through NPR that, that talk about Visit St. Pete and our destination. And then on the, then on the digital side, we're really starting to hit our stride with digital marketing efforts, and you can see on this slide the degree of impressions and clicks and video views that we, that we're driving. And at the end of the day, what really matters is hotel revenue generated. You can see that we generate almost $8 million in hotel revenue at a cost of only $2 million, 1.9 media spend, so we get a significant return. It's a very efficient way to market our destination, and we get an average daily rate of about $170. So a very efficient marketing campaign, and that will continue to grow, and we're going to continue to focus more, more energy on our digital campaigns. And at the end of the day, this is, these are numbers and charts that I think you've probably seen before and we see on a regular basis, but rooms sold, you can see, is up a half a percent for this past year, and average daily rate is up just over 3%, and then RevPAR, revenue per average room, is up 1.3%. So very strong performance in '18 over '17, and, you know, what our intention is and our objective is to keep that going into '19. Certainly, we have, we have a lot of initiatives that are underway. The Beaches of Orlando, I mentioned earlier, was very important for us, and, you know, as I said, Orlando's our number-one feeder market. We launched the second edition of our award-winning Gulf Coast Brewery Passport and Website, and we distributed 50,000 copies of that second edition. We garnered over 1.8 million entries in the Go Gulf Coast campaign, which is a Sweet States campaign, and Clearwater Beaches, as everyone knows, was named by US TripAdvisor as the number-one beach, and we're awfully proud of that. And we, as I said, we launched this new content experience for locals, and we experienced Central Avenue, which was very effective and successful. So we'll keep that going as well as we go into our calendar year '19. We do focus on sports and events activations. In fact, we have a softball tournament underway right now this weekend here, and hopefully that garners a lot of attention. It will be on ESPN over the weekend, and that will get us a lot of attention nationally. But Sports and Events Activations Team has been very busy. We improved visitor engagement at those events through interactive promotions, and we supported over 105 events last year, which was a significant increase, almost 106% over the prior year. So sports and events are an important tool in our toolbox, and we will keep that going. Lessons learned from Hurricane Irma, certainly, we completely redesigned and relaunched an emergency procedure and process for capturing hotel availability pre and post-storm, and that was one of the things that the agency was very proud of last year, and we redeveloped our industry website, providing easier navigation and ability to create reports, and you'll hear more about that as we go forward in terms of the transparency of our research, the data that we collect, and the performance that we generate through that website. And then finally, we have a, you know, we had an initiative to help with regard to the red tide response, and we work directly with other county departments to provide real-time updates from beach updates throughout the year, twice daily, last year when red tide was such an issue for us. At the end of the day, this is maybe the chart that matters most, and that's, you know, the tourist development tax revenue that's generated, and you can see over the years, the success that the CBB has garnered, and clearly, the 6% helped as we, as we moved through the years, but we've got great results, and up 95% over the years, and last year was up 9%. So we're very proud of that and hope that we can keep that momentum going into '19. And one last slide to share before I... And, and one last slide to share before I show a picture of the team, or a couple of slides here, but clearly, Latin America is a big opportunity for us and one that we're going to continue to focus on. We have in-market representation there since 2016, and they're doing a great job. They're, they're continuing to grow and increased marketing effort yielding forty percent increase in room nights from Latin America, and that's an important market for us and one that we'll continue to, to focus on. They made over two hundred account visits last year with local industry representatives and corporate clients, and that will continue to be a growing market for us, and I think we're going to, we're going to focus on Latin America more in the future. And so, just to conclude the, the presentation, clearly, we want to increase average daily revenue rates, and, and we're doing a great job of that. We've, we've entertained over almost seventeen million visitors, day trippers, and overnighters last year, five point six billion in direct visitor expenditures, almost nine billion dollars in economic impact for our, our county, and almost seven million hotel room nights. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to leverage technology to a greater extent as we go into the future and, and make our, a research that we gather from a number of different agencies more available to everyone, including our own staff, in terms of how we make decisions and how to spend our bed tax revenue, and, and certainly to share the performance that we, that we generate every month, so that everyone has more transparency into how things are going. So team, picture of our team back in the office doing a great work. I've had a chance over the last week and a half to meet almost all of them, and they're very motivated and very passionate about what they do, and I'm awfully proud to be a part of that team. So I'd love to try to answer any questions that you have, and if I don't have that answer, or if my team here doesn't, we'll get back to you with the answer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Jim, welcome.
Thank you.
You, you've got a great team, and I, you know, I know every commissioner echoes the sentiments that we've heard before about the great job that y'all do, and you've seen that from the outside.
Have.
What a great job this team does, and want to thank Tim and Leroy who are here. Leroy is a data and technology guy. Just hold up that computer so Commissioner Justice can see the technology that our guru uses. I just wanted him to see that.
Looks a few years old.
It lasts, right? The good things last. A question I wanted to ask you, you had a slide with a bus on there, and I was just wondering if we can bring that slide up. Is that, you know what route that, that's on? Is that a BRT?
You know, I'm not sure what route, that's in Orlando.
It's Orlando, right.
It's in Orlando right now, and I, I've seen it, and it's a, it's a, it's a double bus, and it's, you know, it's a rolling billboard. So it's rather than a fixed location, it's getting a lot of impressions.
If we could find out what route that is, I'm just curious if, if they've got a BRT implementation, I'm not sure. But it looks like one of those buses. You, on slide nine...
That's the bus.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Any train.
The slide with the ADR, the average daily rate on it, fourteen and sixteen, I think, either one. You know, we've had this discussion over the years of increasing the daily rate versus increasing the number of tourists.
Sure.
And I guess, Pete, if we can go back to fourteen for a sec, and I can't get my numbers right, the one with the ADR on it?
Twelve.
Thirteen. No comments, no comments, Commissioner Justice. You know, how, I'd be interested on your perspective on ADR versus the number of tourists. We've kind of looked at, depending more on increasing the rate.
Yeah.
Now, at some point, you can't increase the rate at the same rate that you've done previously, or your market goes away. So where do you see that stabilizing, or at what point do we stabilize? We're now at a hundred and forty-nine?
Hundred and fifty dollars, yeah.
Or, or what's your perspective on that?
I mean, clearly, that's driven by supply and demand, and how many rooms we have, and, and what the demand is and that, and whether the hoteliers can take daily rate up, and whether they can, can get that rate. And I'm sure that, you know, where will it, where will it plateau at some point? I don't think we're there yet. We might hit some ebbs and flows, but I think we're still going to see ADR continue to grow. And I, at this point, I'm not familiar with what our room capacity is and whether there's new inventory coming online or not, but that will have something to do with ADR over the long haul. But I think, I think we're going to continue to see it go much higher than one fifty.
And I know we get comparisons every month to other destinations.
That's right.
But at some point, it changes the demographic that can come here.
It does, yeah.
And I'm just, as we move forward, curious about where that ADR goes in the next ten years.
We, we talked a lot, we, I spent the day yesterday with our, our marketing agency. As we, as I said earlier, we're continuing to look at our campaign going forward, and I was asking some questions about our target markets and who, who is it we're targeting. And, and certainly, we want to, we want to structure our, our campaigns to target those, those people that, that are, are coming here, and then the people that aren't coming here that we want to try to create more appeal for our destination. And certainly, you know, there's an affluent group that, that would be required to pay a higher ADR, so we want to be very aware of what, what we're doing in terms of our marketing campaigns, to make sure that we target the right people. But we, we'll share that with you as we, as we get into the, the campaign going forward.
Thank you. Great to have you on board.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Long?
Yes, thank you. And with regard to the ADR issue, the, two years ago, the comments that were coming our way from London and Berlin were the fact that we had had a large block of inventory open up with the new hotels and resorts on Clearwater Beach, and their rates were pretty high, much more than the one forty-nine. What made the, what made the competition steep and difficult from the perspective of the Europeans was the fact that we don't offer the package deals. And so for families who want that package deal, they were deciding instead of coming to Florida, they were going to Dubai.
Yeah.
Because it was easier to have one lump sum to plan your vacation out. And so that's a concern of mine as well, and the hoteliers here don't seem to think that that's so much of an issue. And maybe it isn't right now, but if they continue to spike those rates, I do, oh, I'm so sorry. I do see it as problematic.
Sure.
For that lack of packaging, number one. Number two, I hope it isn't lost on my colleagues that also, two years ago, we had, the figure used was eight million for the day trippers and visitors into Pinellas County, and I think I heard you say now it's up to seventeen million. There's certainly an argument to be made that is an untenable burden on our infrastructure, i.e. transportation and our sewer systems. So I think that's worthy of keeping in mind when we have our funding, transportation and so on funding.
That's a combined number, though.
I'm sorry?
That's a combined number. Day trippers as well.
No, I get it, but they're still coming over here from somewhere.
Yeah, but it wasn't eight to seventeen. Eight is the overnight, right?
Seventeen was the total.
Yeah.
I, I will say this to your first point. Affordability is a, is a concern. If I, I've had an opportunity to look at recent research, and for international travelers, affordability, not just to our destination, but the United States, affordability is the number-one reason they opt out of coming to the United States currently, and, and the number-one reason by a long, a long margin. So affordability, not just at our destination, but in New York City and other places that they would want to visit, is, is an issue. So it's one that we do need to keep an eye on and make sure that we, that we offer packages that are affordable and make our destination more attractive. Good point.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A, a few points, and there are questions if you want to respond or, because I think you have a different perspective coming in new and your, your more global background. But we, I was talking to the airport folks about, about attracting those airlines, and we talked about the Central America market and trying to balance that, because we, we gave a pretty substantial subsidy or partnership or investment, whatever you want to call it, to COPA a few years ago to invest in the Panama market.
Yep.
And so how we kind of target that, how you all work with our airport folks to make sure that we're targeting the same audience, so that we're getting a double bang for our buck when we, you know, advertise in those markets. But the second thing I wanted to bring up was about, you'd mentioned about sports marketing, and our folks are really bringing a lot of tournaments. We have the tournament coming up this weekend with ESPN, and we invested in Clearwater and their fields. I think the same fields where the tournament is? No, different, are there different?
Yeah, I said you see more a couple of years ago, yes.
So, so we're investing in that. From where you come from, and I see Pasco and, and down south of us, and Hillsborough and other counties around the state are investing in their own sports park. And so how advantageous or worthy for us to do something similar to have where we control our own fields, where we have twenty-four cities that we've invested in, but we don't have control of the schedules, and, and scheduling is difficult? How good would it be for us to have our own, and is it worth the substantial investment that it would take?
You know, you're, if you're asking me for my own opinion, because I, I can't speak for the Bureau at this point, and certainly, but from my opinion and my experience, I've seen certainly in Orlando, there's, there's a tremendous opportunity for, for amateur sports, particularly, you know, the convention center in Orlando is quite large, and they fill it with a volleyball tournament every year, and it's hundreds of thousands of people that come to Orlando for, for an amateur volleyball tournament. And I think there's real advantage to having control over facilities. I think, I asked yesterday about the softball tournament and how we were able to win that over Disney's ABC athletic facilities in Orlando, because I would think if I'm, if I'm making a decision on where to have a softball tournament, I'm probably opting for Orlando over St. Pete. But we have some local influence, people that live in our community that, that were influential in, in making that, that decision, I think. And, and so we were able to get it with facilities that maybe aren't as good as Disney's facilities, but we had, we had a relationship that mattered and, and it made a difference. So I think having, having facilities is a big advantage, and I think there's a real opportunity there. It's, that's a long-term bet, though, because you've got to, if you build something, you invest in it, you've got to fill it.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I think it's something that, that we should at least be on the, the discussion as we're looking at capital and we're looking at whether we invest millions and millions in facilities that we have no influence or control over versus whether we do something on our own. And it's substantial, especially if, for example, the Rays, that's a decision we don't make to do with the Rays, that would be a, a potential funding source for something like that. But it, you know, it's still early, but I still think that's something that we should discuss. And then maybe this is probably more for Mr. Bridges than you, but why aren't we investing in our marketing in the most important, all-important market of West Lafayette, Indiana, to those folks? Thank you for being here.
I will say this to your first point about the coordination with the airport and, and where we invest our marketing money, and is it, is it synced up with other initiatives that are taking place? I think there's, there's opportunity there as well, even within our own shop. I mean, we've had, you know, I've been trying to get to speed as quickly as I can, and I think we have, we have a leisure business, and we have a meetings business, and we have a sports business, and we, we are working, we've had some very constructive conversations already about just making sure that we're coordinated in our efforts, and certainly, we need to reach out to the airport and, and ensure that we're coordinated with the airport here and the airport in Tampa, that we're investing in markets that they're also interested in, and that we have a concerted, coordinated effort. Because I'm not sure right now we're, we're really hitting on all cylinders, so to speak. So I think there's some, there's some opportunity to be a little more efficient with, with our energy.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to weigh in and say I fully agree with Commissioner Justice on the sports facilities. That's something we've talked about over the years. And last year, when I was Chair of the TDC, had some conversation with Tim about that. Hope I don't, you don't mind me putting you on the spot, Tim, but he's done quite a bit of research on that and has some documents that I would ask that you forward to the entire commission. But I would hope TDC would take a look at that. And just as you said, as we're talking about capital funding, that's an opportunity to fund our own project that has a proven ability to bring visitors, and I, I think it's very timely to talk about that.
And it would produce a different type of inventory of hotels and visitors as well.
Commissioner Long?
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't weigh in on that as well, considering the fact that I have five grandchildren. And there's nothing in the world that parents and grandparents won't support than going off somewhere to see their kids, their grandkids participate in some kind of a tournament. And to that point, when the Florida Association of Counties have, have their annual conference for the last few years, it's been over in Orlando at the Hyatt. That place is filled.
Crazy.
With young people, usually in dance. There's some kind of a national dance tournament or competition. I mean, it is extraordinary. And they are, they've got their sleeping bags, and they're sleeping on the floors down, they, they never stop practicing. So I mean, I do think that that is an opportunity that we are missing if we don't start having conversations about it.
Your turn.
And there's a long-term benefit to that as well. They come here for a tournament, they discover our beaches if they've never been here before, and they come back. I mean, it's a, it pays for itself over and over again.
Absolutely.
So is also, is that also the kind of facility that would attract larger conventions, like general conventions? Because I, I don't see that we really have that.
No, we don't, yeah.
I think that's, or maybe a combination kind of thing.
I mean, they actually hold the volleyball tournament in the convention center in Orlando, which is a little crazy. But if you walk in one of their big halls, there's hundreds of, hundreds of courts playing volleyball.
So maybe we could have a quick overview from, I don't know if it's appropriate.
I just felt compelled to come up, I don't know.
If it's appropriate.
It's such a passion of mine.
You're right enough.
So let me preface it by saying, I helped open Disney's Wild World of Sports back in the late nineties.
Didn't do that.
And back in those days, Disney was relying about eighty percent of third-party programming. It's a wonderful facility. Today, Disney does ninety to ninety-five percent of their own programming. They control their calendar, they control the demographics of the events that bring in. We are entirely beholden with our sports program and activities to all the municipalities or private facility owners for programming. And displacement in this county is a big issue. Softball in Clearwater is great, the city of Clearwater does a great job. This ESPN tournament is going to be a very wonderful thing for us, not only from the direct economic impact, but the exposure on ESPN. We've got sixteen of the top colleges coming in to play softball this weekend. It's going to be tremendous. But those opportunities are few and far between because we lack facilities. And I don't want to get premature here, but a facility, I had to, I wanted to come up and address your comment or your question about an indoor facility. We would look at, I think, conceptually, an event center. That would be multipurpose. It would hold the events that Jim described earlier. You could do indoor volleyball, you could do all of those Olympic sports like wrestling and fencing that we currently don't have facilities to host those. And those are great niche events to bring into the area. But they could also be used for high school graduations and chamber events. And so the concept for us is an event center, not so much a convention center. That would be multipurpose. But we definitely need fields. We need softball fields, we need soccer fields. The MLS program is another one that I felt compelled to come up, because we've been talking about that for a long time. We've had three teams here in the past. We had the New York Red Bulls just recently, this year decide to go down south to Bradenton. They were training at Oldsmar. Again, it's a matter of partnering with the right city who's willing to clear fields out on their schedule, upgrade them to the standards that are needed for MLS, whereas if we controlled our own facilities, and this is my pitch, I couldn't agree more.
Good job, Mr. Bradenton.
I, I believe it's, it's probably under a hundred million dollars. I don't want to get, again, fifty to seventy million dollar event, event centers are being built around the country. And we have experts in the field that live right here in Clearwater, their businesses are here in Clearwater, that could help us, guide us there.
So how much room would you need for that?
About a hundred acres.
That was going to be my question. And where, where would that, I mean, I know you must have like a...
He does.
Is it, is it under county?
Have it all designed already.
Control, or is it controlled on the open market?
Well...
What you have, where you have it.
Two that come to mind real quickly are obviously Toy Town and the sod farm. In Toy Town for fields, nothing too strenuous of an infrastructure that because of the subsurface there, we know what the issues were there when Darrell Leclerc and his group wanted to come in with a screen train facility. But I would recommend that we evaluate that. Sod farm possibly for an event center. Again, whether you could bridge the highway to make those functional together or separate. The, the fields and the event center could actually be separate, but you obviously have advantages of combining them because of bad weather issues with evacuation facilities, restrooms, locker rooms, and, and that nature. So ideally, the hundred acres would be contiguous, but they could be split apart if you had two different locations. That's the advantageous locations, too, from the standpoint, it's Mid County, close to our airports.
Hotels.
It could also tie into a conversation about a transportation hub as well. It could be multi-faceted facility that on the weekdays, when you have commuters that want to park and take a transportation route, on the weekends, we need that parking for events.
And being solid waste-centric, you don't think is a negative for, for...
I don't at this point, no.
Okay.
Want to come? Intriguing.
Share your plan with us.
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
Other questions? It's always interesting. All right, thank you very much, and welcome again. Hey, Mr. Midell.
Hey, Mr. Midell.
Good morning, Mike Midell, Economic Development Director for Pinellas County. And I'd like to introduce two of our senior staff that are with us today. Cindy Margiata heads up our administrative research and redevelopment component. And then Suzanne Christman heads up our business development team that helps existing companies and helps recruit new companies from outside the area. Unable to be with us today is Cynthia Johnson, who heads up our Small Business Development Center. And then Stacy Swank, who heads up our marketing and communications efforts to promote the area. With that, I'll show you a shot of our entire team. We're small but mighty, 20 people now, three different divisions. The Business Development Division, as I mentioned, that looks at recruiting new businesses, helping our existing companies to grow. Small Business Development Center that helps our small businesses to grow into big businesses and it helps entrepreneurs with their ideas to become the businesses of tomorrow. And then, our support team is the group that helps both of those other divisions with the data, with the marketing and with the administrative support. Partners, we, economic development is definitely a team sport. We could not do what we do without a myriad of partners, especially with only 20 people on staff. So, within our actual suite of offices, we have three federal employees, two with the U.S. Commercial Services Office and one with the Small Business, U.S. Small Business Administration Export Finance Group. And they are key integrated partners with our international trade development and a foreign direct investment effort. And then, we have hotel office space that we have available for the Enterprise Florida staff, who's our state economic development partnership. And then, beyond that, we have to partner with obviously the entire pipeline of workforce. So, we work with the school system, the education foundation, the universities, the technical schools, everyone having to deal with that. AM Skills, that is an independent group looking at creating jobs for the manufacturing sector. So, that is part of what we do. The infrastructure is part of what we do. So, we work closely with the MPO, Ford Pinellas, with FDOT and our, even our own water and sewer groups and the CIP plan internally to make sure that the infrastructure that our businesses need is in place when it needs to be in place to support their growth. We do with regional and statewide economic development groups. We obviously work with our chambers of commerce, we work with the industry associations, we work with just, you know, any group that is out there working with the business community. Because we need to have that connection to know who's expanding, who's growing, who needs our help, who's facing barriers to their growth. And also to find out who their suppliers and network is so we can go, reach out to that supplier or that customer elsewhere in the country and show them the benefits of being here in Pinellas County. Beyond that, what we do, a wide variety of programs. We really are a full-service economic development organization. We, as I mentioned, help retain our existing businesses, that's the key. 85% of the business we do every day relates to an existing employer, helping them to grow, helping them to stay here instead of moving out of the area. We also work with companies that are trying to start up here. Either somebody who has got an idea, is either an engineer at an existing company that has been downsized or a defense contract has ended and they're out there with an idea that they've had for 20 years and they're ready to develop it into a business. We work with the universities with the research they're doing to help that turn into a business. And we work with the small business people in all realms of life and help them to create their own business. We, again, attracting high-wage employers from outside the area. We facilitate access to capital. So, we try to make that link between the business owner and the financial, the banking institution or the other opportunities that are available to raise money for that expansion. Improving the business climate, we do advocate at the state and federal level for reduced regulation, for lower business costs, everything that we need to be able to make this area even more attractive to businesses. We foster those partnerships that were on the previous slide, just making sure that we're all working together to make that happen. The trained workforce, the number one issue with all of our companies and clients that we're working with is finding quality workers. That supply, supplanted transportation, which was our big issue in the past, not that that went away, it's just that workforce got even worse. Yeah, so the demand is extremely high. And then, identifying and promoting Pinellas County sites, which, as you know, driving around the community, there are not a lot of empty sites of any kind for any kind of new commercial or industrial development. So, but we've had some great success. During the recession, we actually lost 60,000 jobs in Pinellas County from 2006 to 2009. In the time since then, we've gained back that 60,000, we've added over 40,000 more. So, the economy has recovered and continues to expand. We have more people employed here today than we ever have before. The unemployment rate, the gray line on here, you can see that Florida and Pinellas County have a wilder swing when, in a business cycle. And a lot of that has to do with our dependence on tourism and construction. When you have a business cycle downturn and people are not spending money, we lose out dramatically because people can't afford to retire here, they can't afford to vacation here as much. And so, we, our unemployment rate swings way north and then, hopefully in the recovery time, we have those sectors recover, but we also continue our growth in our diversified employment of manufacturing, financial services, IT and corporate headquarters. And that's the kind of thing we're doing now.
We have a question, Mike.
Sure.
Thanks, Mike. On the employment side, you know, we've gone up or we've got more people working. Do we know if, has it ever been broken out, how many of those are government jobs versus private sector jobs?
Yes, we can definitely get that data. It's, as far as the sector growth is concerned, our government sector has not grown a lot in recent years. I mean, we've kept a lid on it, you can see it in our own employment, but it's also true of the school system and local city governments. Federal government has grown slightly due to increases out at the Bay Pine Center primarily. But, yeah, our government employment is a small part of our overall sector and is not a growing.
Thank you, I'd love to see that.
Oh, certainly, we'll get that.
Actually, I have a question too about that. Can you break out full-time as opposed to part-time jobs?
I don't believe so. I think it's reported on an FTE basis. I'll, we'll take a look at that and see if we can dig down and find that data. But, yeah, the only data I've ever seen is full-time equivalent employees, so it wraps them both in together. Let's see, there we go. Oh, going back to the unemployment rate, the rate dropped actually to 2.7% in September of last year. I mean, that is an incredibly small number. It's lower than it's been since December of 2000. So, and that, and we've added to our labor force since then. So, at, you know, the, at the peak of the unemployment rate there in 2009, we had 52,000 people out of work, people living in Pinellas County that were looking for jobs. Today, there's only 15,000. And in fact, we have more job openings than we have people seeking work at the moment. So, we rely on the incoming residents, the 700 people a month that are coming here, net new people to Pinellas County, is that's where our employers are getting their workers. Because many of those 15,000 are either in transition or they have long-term skills gaps that we need to address. And we are working with the university and technical school system to try to help recruit these people into the jobs of the future. And definitely, the educational system has been very cooperative in coming up with a curriculum we need to train people into these programs. The biggest problem right now is really getting people into those programs and getting them excited about manufacturing, about IT, about healthcare, about those industries that really are growing.
I have another question. Where does the unemployment rate come from? Where do you get that data?
It's two different surveys each month. So, the survey that shows the unemployment rate is a survey that is done of phone calls to households. And the agency says, you know, is someone in the household looking for work currently? Are they employed? And then, that's that survey. The employer survey that shows the number of people at work is a survey of businesses to say how many people they are employing at any given time. And so, sometimes you'll see unusual circumstances where they don't seem to match up from month to month. It blends out over the course of the year, but they are two entirely different surveys and that's why you have a little bit of discrepancy sometimes from month to month.
Mike, on that front, are there different, there seems, we've heard there are different kind of unemployment rates, some that are these and then there are others that are perhaps higher than those that really reflect the folks that aren't seeking work anymore. So, they're really come out of the, how's that starting to show?
Oh, it's definitely come down. Our labor force, which is the number of people that are looking for work or are employed, has been growing consistently. And it's, it recovered very quickly after the recession. People wanted to be back at work, but it took a while for employment to catch up. Now, that number's pretty high. So, we've seen all sectors of unemployment drop. So, the people that have long-term unemployed that kind of gave up, they're coming back into the labor force and looking for-
Those are being, those are coming back into the numbers now.
They are. Then they're coming in, so they come out of that realm of, you know, I've given up and I, that's the reason I'm not, not looking for work is because there just wasn't anything out there for me. We're seeing a movement of that group back into the labor force and then into employment. So, because there are so many more jobs available now, I mean, there are so many openings right now.
Clarity, that clarity for that path from an existing job to another job is murky at best. I just don't know how we connect with people, number one, and how we show what the path looks like, I mean, a real path for them, where they can actually do it while, you know, feeding their families and all that kind of stuff. So, it's a difficult, it's a difficult path.
It is. And it's just hard to reach out to the general population. And we have the same problem with the K-12 school system, is trying to get the parents, guidance counselors, teachers and the students themselves to look seriously at what they're going to do when they graduate from college or they graduate from high school and go into the labor force and to look at what the jobs are going to look like at that time, to realize if they need to take STEM classes now, they need to be focused on that future. And to get them interested in programs that may not need a college education. Because we've done so much over the years to point people to college that the kids that just don't want to go to college or don't feel they're capable of achieving in college, miss out on careers that can earn them six figures. You know, just in the manufacturing realm and even in some healthcare institutions, if they work up the career ladder.
Yeah, it's that employment status thing that we're, you know, that we've got to connect not only with students but with parents, that, you know, an employment status may include a college education, it may include a high school education with certifications beyond that. And it's not really, you're both, you're rising up to employment status.
Yeah.
In either case, it's not, it's not one's better than the other, it's just different for different people. And I think that's a difficult-
Yeah, it is a tough thing to do and, you know, and it's a tough thing to do in American society too. In Germany, they've already accomplished that because they do the testing and they say, you've got a good career waiting for you at the end of this path of education in manufacturing. And you're going to earn every bit as much as this, you know, this other college-bound student over here, but it's a different pathway for you. And we have not really done a good job of communicating that. And I think we're working at it. Definitely the high school with their career academies are beginning to get the message out, but I think it takes a while to overcome the perceptions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mike, I don't know if this is, you know, it's probably a public school system issue, but the fact of the matter is, I remember when I was in elementary school, going into high school, there was a profile, it wasn't a test, but it was just a profile that was given to the students that really helped to define what your skill sets and your abilities were.
And your interests.
Coupled with your interest. And I guess it was a personality thing more than anything maybe, but it was very helpful in terms of young students deciding maybe what their options might be.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering, do you know if they do that still?
There is, there's a, the Education Foundation came up with a future jobs program that they were, and I believe they still do employ it at the, I think in its freshman to junior year of high school, depending on the principal at that individual institution. But you go through that inventory of interests, abilities and capabilities and they do give you a list of careers that match what you're, what would really work for you. And what I'd like to do, and we began discussing that with the school system and working with the community college and with USF, is to see the results of that on, you know, and try to figure out a way to reach down to that student, you know, without violating, you know, confidentiality or whatever, but letting them know the opportunities that match where the results are. So, they know that the career path for this, that your interest lines up with, is here at P-Tech or it's here at USF-St. Pete. And show them where locally they can achieve that career, you know, that occupation that they seem so suited for.
Connecting dots.
Connecting dots, thank you.
The other thing we do is we target industries that, I'm sorry, did I interrupt? We target industries that pay more than the average wage and that bring new money into the local economy. So, our target industries look at companies that sell most of their products and services outside of Pinellas County, in fact, outside of Florida. And those are companies like manufacturing, the aerospace, aviation, defense industry, medical device industry in particular, looking at business and financial services, corporate headquarters, IT companies and the like. So, these are high-wage jobs, which brings new money into the economy and provides more disposable income for those workers who then, because they live in the Tampa Bay area, they go out and buy things from our secondary businesses that are reliant on that local market. So, the more money you have in this local economy, the better everybody does because there's more money to circulate within the economy. And here, overall, we're 67% higher wages in our target industry sectors than we are in the economy as a whole. So, you can see that's why we do this, why we're moving in that direction. We had a study done in 2014 that updated our Pinellas by Design targets for targeted industries. We are ahead of our targeted pathway to better prosperity. We're at, we've created 5,730 new high-wage jobs in the period from 2015 to 2017 and the target was for 3,900. So, we're ahead of the game, we're moving in the right direction and wages have been rising overall in Pinellas County. The average wage has been rising considerably. This is the results of this past fiscal year. 830 new jobs are projected over the next two to three years with companies that we have assisted in one way or another here in Pinellas County. 2,117 jobs will be retained. $127 million in capital investment is projected, which eventually will work its way into our tax base and provide the support we need for the other services. $265,000 in training grants and all of that money comes from the state and federal level and is directed to our employers here to help improve their workforce and which obviously makes them, makes our residents eligible for higher pay and better opportunities in the future. So, and for every dollar of county incentives we've put into these programs, there's $275 in direct and indirect wages from the companies we've helped support.
Mike, on that front, thank you, Madam Chair. Are we, are these 14 new companies or expansions, are we, are they typically manufacturing? Are they office? Are we getting?
It's been a mix. This year, the two biggest ones were, excuse me, two biggest ones were manufacturing. Jabil Circuit did decide, and actually, that'll be a mix. Most of the new jobs that they've created at Jabil will be engineering and the creative side of the organization and developing new products that would probably end up being produced overseas. Jabil has 78,000 employees around the world. And so, you know, here is the headquarters of a Fortune 500 company, so all of that high-level management group and the administrative support is here, but so are the major engineering facilities. And they are right now completing, it'll be, soon be having a ribbon cutting, I think it's the end of March, early April for their innovation lab that is in the old Tampa Bay Research Institute building on Roosevelt. And that's where they will do the bulk of their design for their military and medical device sector work. And so, we're excited about that. And overall, they're going to be tearing down the old engineering building and building a new facility there, then they'll be renovating their- And so we're excited about that. And overall, they're, they're going to be tearing down the old engineering building and play, building a new facility there. Then they'll be renovating their administrative headquarters. Total of $67 million in capital investment and 300 new jobs, along with the fact that they're consolidating their employment from the Tampa Bay area, will come back to that campus. And then that 300 new jobs.
And one other question on that front, Mike. So we got 14 corporate relocations and, and that included the expansions of existing companies. Do you have any sense of the limitations that Pinellas County has in terms of land and how that might have affected a number of other companies from relocating here? Or did, did it come down to a couple of locations and they just felt more comfortable elsewhere than here because of land availability?
Well, it usually does boil down to a real estate transaction. I mean, there's a lot of folks who would love to be here, but there isn't space for them. We were involved even in the JP Morgan Chase and Bristol-Myers Squibb, the projects that went recently to Tampa. We were there at the table presenting, you know, Pinellas County sites. It's just that we didn't have 100,000 square feet of office space ready to go, and Tampa did. So it's, it's tough. It is, it is an environment where, and because of that, we have shifted our marketing and our promotional efforts to match what we have available to us. So we, we look at the small privately-held companies, you know, most of our projects are in the 150, you know, anywhere from 30 employees to 150 employee range because that's what we have space for. And that's the kind of company that is, tends to be privately-held where the decision is almost entirely in the hands of the owner, CEO. And, and they love Pinellas County and they, they come here because they love it and they see the opportunity and that we have space to fit that. So we can, we can accommodate people with 30,000 to 40,000 square foot needs. But once we get 100,000 square feet, it's tough to fill.
And our light industrial areas, those designated areas can also accommodate office buildings.
Yes.
It's just a matter of how far along that industrial sector has grown there. Because it's, it's a lot, a lot different prestige issues that come into play.
Well, and there's cost issues. Yeah, that's the biggest thing. And that's the reason we're having trouble convincing developers of both industrial and office property to even build here. Because the cost of construction exceeds the rents they can receive. And part of what we're looking at in the Penny Four is how we can help write down some of those initial costs of development to enable the developer to create space. And, yeah, because they're not doing it on their own. They've come right out and said, look, I'm going to put a condominium tower here because I can get a return on my investment. I will lose money on building an office tower because the people will not rent it for what it costs me to build.
Yeah, so either affordable housing issues or affordable commercial issues. You have both of them, and so you're underwriting at some level.
Yes.
The infrastructure piece, land piece, infrastructure piece to help make it.
Yeah, exactly.
May I address this?
Well, and to kind of piggyback on what you're thinking is, it's not getting any better for us with Water Street and then with that midtown development right near Dale Mabry there, with the sheer volume of office towers going over there. Because that's what I keep hearing is that the office space, we lack the office space in Pinellas County.
Oh, yeah. Well, and really industrial, you don't see as much, but it's, it's actually the vacancy rate for industrial is lower than the vacancy rate for, for office right now. It's about 3% for industrial space is vacant. And that's like nothing. That's like a broom closet in the corner of a big building, you know? It's, there's just nothing out there right now. We only have a few developers that are actually putting up new space. So we do, we do need to look at.
So I think we need to go talk to Jeff Finnick since the mayoral candidate over there seemed to think he has too much influence.
So, in this, and I was going to save this for the end, but like, so if you're king for a day, Mr. Mydell, what would you want us to invest and where would we, you know, we have the, the Star Center to some degree, although I think we learned, or I learned last week that we're kind of locked into one building for a long time. And then the sod farm and then, you know, potentially the trop site.
Yeah.
What would we?
The, well, AirCo is our biggest opportunity right now. And it is zoned for office and industrial, and the airport is finishing their environmental assessment as they told you this morning. So we're excited about that. We're looking at the ponds on the site. Our Public Works people are looking at removing that concrete wear that would make the entire site tidal again, which would take the requirement for retaining volumes of water on-site away. We just need to make sure that the nutrients are out of the water when it goes into the canal, but we won't have to have 20 acres of ponds on a 117-acre site. And so that is a big, big step in the right direction. We're working with identifying opportunities to provide fill, to fill in those ponds and to bring, the entire site is in the 125, 120-year floodplain, so we got to lift that up. So that each building is going to need several feet of fill to bring it up to code. And so there's a lot of elements at play there, but the positive side is the land is already under our control. It does have the, the problem that it has to be a long-term land lease, which makes it, again, so not every, every client is going to want to have a lease. They want to own the land that they're sitting on, but enough of them, the, the other advantage is we're right on the runway. So aviation, aerospace, defense industries are doing extremely well right now. And so, and we've got a lot of engines, we've got three parties interested in the AirCo property now, today, that have looked at the site. So we're, we're real hopeful for that. The, and that can be office, you know? So the, the part adjacent to the runways would probably be aviation-related. And then as you get closer to Evergreen and closer to the southeast side of that site, we could look at some office space perhaps. So we're trying to do a little bit of both there. And then we've got, we're working with Public Works to develop 126th Avenue from 66th Street all the way to 28th Street. Right now, there's gaps there at the canal and at the Speedway. And connecting that will enable us, there's quite a few acres of industrial land that's privately-held, that's intermixed in that area, but has terrible access right now. So that'll help bring some new land onto the market. And we, you know, we're looking at every opportunity that's out there. And the other thing we're going to have to do is figure out how we work with office developers to put office space in our central business districts. And that will be probably something related with the Penny Four plan. And they, enabling us to write it down either through offset of parking costs or possibly through ownership of the office floors. We would actually condominiumize that facility. We would own the office space, it would be up to us to rent it. We would know that we would probably lose money on the construction costs. We'd pay more for the space than we would necessarily get back in rents, but we would have created the jobs on that site. So instead of giving the incentive to the, to the client, we actually create the space that enables the client to locate here.
And then on that, on that front, we, obviously, we're working with our partners, like, say, the city of Clearwater on 19, between East Bay and State Road 60, a lot of, all those things are starting to fill in there too. If, if, if they're looking for penny money, that off-the-top penny money for infrastructure-related.
Yes, they will be part of the joint review committee and, and projects will come. This, it's, it really is off-the-top for county-wide projects. So it won't be unincorporated area only we're looking at. And, you know, definitely the highest demand office space is in downtown St. Pete right now. So we'll definitely be working with them to try to figure out a way to create some space. Downtown Clearwater, as they go through their imagining process and recreate their downtown, that'll create some demand for, for office there too. There is office space available here now, but, you know, hopefully the demand will pick up when they see the quality of life pick up.
So how far ahead of time do we need to be getting that AirCo piece ready?
Oh, right now, we are.
From a water and sewer standpoint, is that, I mean, are we pursuing that right now?
We are.
Okay, all that.
Yes, we're looking at that. We're looking at the, probably the first thing would be to create a better roadway access through Stony Brook. And create a spine road up the center of that property so that we've got more opportunities to sell, sell parcels on either side. And then, of course, Star Center is something that we will develop over the next few years. There are two vacant parcels there. Well, one has that school that we could easily tear down and redevelop. And that probably is a better office site than industrial. It's not wide enough to allow truck turnarounds there. So we'll have to look at what would go on that site. But the northeast side is a perfect industrial site, just like the others that were developed, North 114.
You feel like you have a pretty good handle then on the inventory of, of, say, sites that could provide, you know, say, 40,000 or 50,000 feet of office space and up in our county? I think there's some spots along 19 and mid to north county. And also, I know one site in, in Dunedin that can house 50,000 square feet of office space. I don't think it's a great location for a lot of companies, but for some companies, it's near a downtown, it's near 19. It's not too, so you, it's a good access point, but we got to have, you have to know about that inventory.
Yeah, well, we maintain that inventory and we, we have the premium membership fee in CoStar as well. So we can review all of the data that's out there on the market and our people around the county every day writing down the signs, you know, of space that's available. So we do, we try to monitor that every day. But we have to meet the needs of the, of the client and oftentimes they want to be, you know, as close to interstate speeds as possible. And that's what makes it difficult for sites like downtown Clearwater.
There's that one company up in Palm Harbor that's taken about every retail space. They've got office, they don't want to go anywhere but that area. So there are companies like that.
Yes, oh, definitely. And particularly in the tech industry, which is what that company does, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great, you bet. Oh, the, the other, SS White is the other company that actually relocated from Biscataway, New Jersey, down here with 125 jobs. They were there at the, the grand opening. It's, it's a great company. And again, privately-held, wonderful family and wonderful company. Global Tampa Bay, thank you for making it possible for us to get back into the international realm several years ago. That program is no longer a pilot, it's a full-blown program. We have a regular schedule of out-of-state, out-of-country visits. This year's trip to Mexico netted $35 million in sales for local companies, Pinellas County companies. And, and we do have a prospect we're working from that, that visit that would be a $20 million capital investment if they decide to locate here. We're in competition with others, but we think we got a good shot at it. The foreign direct investment, we've had a grant from JP Morgan Chase through our Global Tampa Bay operation with Pasco, Hillsborough, and Pinellas. And we will, that's where, how we did the, the FDI side of the Mexico trip. But we also had a trip to UK Ireland where we met with nine prospects and then Toronto, Montreal, with 10 companies that are thinking about locations within Tampa Bay. The coming year, we're looking at Panama and Peru for sales trips. And we're looking at Amsterdam and France for foreign direct investment. Amsterdam because of that new direct flight on Delta to, to Tampa. And we want to take advantage of that opportunity, let people know that we're one flight away and we can be that North American headquarters for them with, with easy access back to, to Amsterdam. Then looking at the entrepreneurial side and small business side, 813 jobs are projected to be created by these small businesses. And this is, you know, here locally, homegrown businesses. $32 million in increased sales for companies that, that received counseling from our, our counselors and $7 million in government contracts. Obviously, we want to increase that number. Many of those, many of the $7 million in that, in those 17 companies are federal contracts right now. But what we want to do with the SBE program that we've heard about is, is to increase that amount in county government. And then nine brand-new businesses are in Pinellas County that our counselors helped. Looking at, again, the Small Business Enterprise Program, we did have outreach meetings this year with the result of, you know, having our counselor, our consultant online give us direction on how to restructure our program. We reached out to the community and said, okay, what are the barriers that should be experienced? What can we do to make it easier for you to do business with Pinellas County? Received that report. We bought the software. Thank you again for authorizing that. And it is now in place and being loaded. We've already tripled the number of vendors in that database and that continues to grow on a daily basis. We had a meeting with our, our partners here in Pinellas County and St. Pete, Clearwater, PSDA and Pinellas County Schools are all looking at the same B2G Now software that would enable us to, you know, share our vendor base and be able to, you know, have that broader pool of companies to work with. And so we're excited about that opportunity. The local conversation is coming up, March the 1st, again, at the epicenter. This is kind of the, we, we had that listening session earlier last year. And now this year, we're coming back, we're presenting all the things that we have done. And again, we're asking the business community, you know, what do you think? We're informing them how to use the program. And the second half of that meeting, we'll actually have our partners. We'll have our Pinellas County purchasing people there, but again, PSDA, the school board, and cities of St. Pete and Clearwater will be there with their opportunities for these companies. So after this update on, on where we are with the system, the, the small businesses will actually be able to go to buyers from local governments and tell them what they can do in terms of goods and services. So, and then, yeah, for further information, our website, pcdd.org/update will give you all the data. And that is updated regularly, so small businesses can know exactly where we are with the SBE program. This year, obviously, the red tide was a major impact on tourism, but it affected all businesses in, in Pinellas County in some way or another. If, and, and especially, there were like four or five businesses that could document actual losses, economic losses as a result of the red tide. And $185,000 in state bridge loan money came to our local businesses. This is to help them to get from the time of the, the impact on their business till their FEMA checks come in. So it's a bridge only, and those loans have to be paid back as soon as the FEMA money comes in. In fact, in six months, no matter what. So either their, their own insurance or the state and federal money could help pay that back. But we also had a small business recovery center, just as we did for the hurricane a while back. We had it for red tide. They operated out of the epicenter in the old CBB space and they worked directly with businesses to provide those federal dollars. We have a reverse trade show every year where this is, again, in line with that SBE program. This is where county departments and agencies all over Tampa Bay, including Hillsborough County, Pasco, come here and they set up a booth and our small businesses come in and they have a chance to tell them what they do and to try to find those opportunities to make government sales. Finance Fair is where the booths are manned by our banks and our factoring and financing organizations. And again, the small businesses come in and they identify where they can get the money they need. Minority Business Enterprise Week, we, every year, we work with the Tampa Bay Black Business Investment Corporation and Prospera, the Hispanic Business Corporation, to reach out to minority communities to provide financing and to provide assistance to them. Government contracting, city contracting, outreaches and so on. Prospera actually conducts workshops in Spanish in our facilities and in downtown Clearwater where we have a strong Hispanic community. Opportunity Zones is a new opportunity this year as a result of the Tax Act and federal government. It allows people who have capital gains to put that money into investments in enterprise, in Opportunity Zones. And you can see those locations throughout Pinellas County. And if they leave that money there for 10 years, they not only have deferred the, I mean, they've actually, any money they make on that investment becomes the basis at the end of that 10 years. So it's as if that money has always existed. It's not taxable. So they, and they also defer the capital gains on the money they got, you know, the way they got the money in the first place. So it's a double impact to, you know, an investor. They're going to save money on their immediate capital gains and they're going to save money on their long-term capital gains by having these opportunities. So the pcdd.org/oz for Opportunity Zone describes each one of those census tracts, gives you a lot of demographic and economic information, talks about available opportunities for development, recent developments that have happened there. So that is a great way to steer those funding organizations that way. Different groups around the country are setting up Opportunity Zone funds that are like REITs or, or other kinds of grouped investors that would put money into zones. And we just want to make sure they are aware of the opportunities here in Pinellas County. And we did lobby for the sites there. We're only about, less than a quarter of the sites that were, that would have qualified would be selected in any given location. So we, we went through and did the research ahead of time and identified sites that made the most sense. Industrial Revenue Bonds, that program is still going strong, 15.9 million this year for the Clearwater Marine Aquarium expansion. And you'll see we're working on another major project right now as we move forward. On the, on the research side, we've, we created a dashboard that provides the data, current data on the characteristics that site selectors and business owners really care about. So we take information from surveys that are done of those CEOs saying, what's really important to you? And we gather that data, show the trends and show the numbers. And again, that's on pcdd.org/dashboard. That'll give you more information. Tampa Bay Innovation Center, this year, big success. We moved from 6,000 square feet in the St. Pete College facility into 20,000 square feet at the 501 building. That space is almost filled up now. We've got about half of the eighth floor that's still available. All of the ninth floor is completely filled and, and half of the, the eighth. It's a great opportunity for us. We had a big open house in November and, and the businesses are thrilled. And we've already had, you know, a number of graduates. already had, you know, a number of graduates, obviously through that Tampa Bay Innovation Center program over the years, but they love the, the fact that we not only provide space, but through Tanya's team, we are able to provide the counseling and the connections that they need to suppliers, to financing, to seed capital, to venture capital, whatever they need.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just restate the square foot?
20,000 square feet.
From, what were they?
From, from 6,000.
6,000, okay.
So, yeah, we tripled it and already are growing and, and I think that's going to fill quickly now then. One of the doing things that we're looking at going forward is we have applied for Economic Development Administration grant to create 45,000 square feet of brand-new space and these people will move from the 501 building into that space and then, you know, will have doubled again in the opportunities that would be available for startup businesses. Plus we'll have the ability again to work with manufacturers. This, the 501 space isn't appropriate for that, so it's only tech companies. It's still our target industries, but it's primarily IT, some medical devices, some corporate headquarters ideas that are coming out of there. But they're all target industries. Now, the other co-working spaces you hear about throughout Tampa Bay are open really to all businesses. So you'll see lawyers and, I mean, there's been yoga, Pilates studios in there and there's all kinds of things. We focus exclusively on those high-wage primary employers.
Right.
And then the Star Center, you had the big presentation on that. Go ahead.
I just want to go back to, to the Innovation Center and the idea that whether it's Clearwater, Palm Harbor, Dunedin, Oldsmar, there seems to be some interest
Yes.
in that area. I brought something last year that didn't get funded, but we, I saw a recent effort over in Oldsmar for an incubator-type location. I just want to make sure that we as a county are, you know, embracing any of those and all of those efforts to create that kind of hub in, in North County as well because you just go to a couple of those meetings and you can see the energy
Yeah.
and the need for, as you say, space, counseling, all of that, you know, funding source, whatever it might be. So I, I hope we're at least kind of keeping an eye out for an area that we can actually help.
Oh, definitely. And we, as a result of your request in the past budget cycle, we, we have posted now a position that will enable us, once filled, to have a counselor for South County, one for Mid-County and one for North County. So Kurt Forster on our staff is already transitioning as we've posted the South County job. He will be our North County Counselor and he will be throughout Dunedin North, the entire, all day, every week. So he, I mean, he'll be back for some staff meetings in our office, but primarily he will be operating out of the Chambers of Commerce and other locations in North County, working with Oldsmar, working with Dunedin to, to identify space and to, and to really to bring that one-on-one counseling to the people rather than making everybody drive their offices.
Yeah, and the Chambers do provide that. You all do provide
Right.
some of that counseling to it. And there's a, you know, and I was in talking with two Chambers this week at different times about their role versus an incubator role. And there, and there, there's some similarities and, you know, but there's some differences too and they can coexist. You can have members that are part of the incubator who are Chamber members. So it does work
Yes.
together. It doesn't have to be
Yeah, it does. And it's tough to find space for anybody as we've talked about briefly. So it, it is tough. Now, Lealman, we are looking at space within the Lealman Exchange for a small number of companies that, that could come in there and we will have an office there so our Mid-County person, well, actually our South County person will operate on a regular basis out of the Lealman Exchange, meeting with companies that want to start up. And we're looking at the possibility of creating small cubicles there that would just be space that a company could come in and utilize and, you know, help them get their feet under them and then ideally move out into, into rental space. So we're looking at that and we look at same thing for opportunities
All right.
in North County. Then looking forward, obviously one of the biggest things on our agenda right now is the penny four. Looking at, in January, we're going to start receiving that money and we, our joint review committee has been identified. Our first meeting will be on the 25th of March and we have hired our, in the process of hiring a consultant that will look at the housing component of that in particular. Will look at the demand for housing at the level of 60% of AMI and lower, 60 to 80, 80 to 120 and 120 up. So we're kind of looking at all elements of housing, from executive housing down to, to, you know, disabled seniors and trying to fit everything in between and identify really where the gaps are and what we can do about it. And that data will go into that ED Capital Projects and Housing effort. Then the level of service enhancement is just what I was talking about, adding a person on the Small Business Development Center team to cover North County, South County and, and Mid-County. Small Business and Enterprise Program, we talked about when, we talked about doing things this coming year. We will continue to flesh out the, the software, continue to recruit vendors. We will start our emphasis on the CIP program and make sure that the, the general contractors are hiring minor, I mean, small business subs that are in the Tampa Bay area and we'll set, you know, aspirational goals for that, but we'll also work when we're actually developing the RFP and taking in those responses to let them know that's important to us so we need to move on. And then from there, we will go to the CCNA program, to the job order contracting and to their sheltered market program. So by the end, this time next year, we'll have the full gamut of that program in place. New Business Incubator, the, we will give you a status update on the grant. We expect your March 12th meeting to look at that. We did get a letter for further consideration, but we need to come up with $4.5 million in matching funds for their $7.5 million. It's still far bigger amount of money than we've ever gotten out of the federal for an Economic Development Organization grant. Usually $2 million is the cap, so to be able to get 62% of the project funded by the federal government instead of 20% is a great opportunity and we're working on all the pieces of that and we'll bring it to you on March the 12th. The Secured Compartmental Information Facility, this is a program we've continued to work at. It will actually put into a decision package for this coming year. This is a facility that allows our small business defense contractors to bid on those top-secret and secret projects that they really don't have the access to without going to McDill. And right now McDill is a very busy place and they rarely get time on that SCIF facility. Our bigger companies have their own. It's the small companies and we have hundreds of them that are small business defense contractors and we want to make them succeed and we want to use it as an asset to recruit those businesses to the area. Tampa Bay, Team Tampa Bay and Team Florida, these are replacements for the Tampa Bay Partnership and for the Enterprise Florida group when they didn't have the marketing money they needed to support and Tampa, Tampa Bay Partnership kind of pivoted away from economic development into general advocacy and, and Enterprise Florida's had its own problems over the years. What we're trying to do is make sure that we work with our local partners like we do with Global Tampa Bay. We had a recent, in fact, we've got a trip coming up to Dallas where all of the seven counties in the Tampa Bay area are going with us to talk to site selection consultants as a group. So we're, we're reaching out and we're doing that kind of on a volunteer, staff-free basis. I mean, we don't have any paid staff in that organization. They all work together to make it happen, but we're looking long-term at how do we replace that effort? And we're also looking at our own municipal partners at SINAPS, the big trade show for the tech companies over in Tampa recently. We had city representatives from Dunedin and St. Pete and Clearwater and Oldsmar came with us to that show and we, we have, we've broadened our exhibit booth information and we will take that on the road this coming year to some trade shows around the country and, and our municipal partners will be able to go with us. And finally, we have a big $100 million revenue bond coming up for Nova Southeastern University's Patel College of Osteopathic Medicine. That's right there at the old Clearwater Christian College campus. You can't miss it when you're going on the Bayside Bridge right now. It's beautiful and that'll be a, a great asset to our healthcare and, and medical device industry in the area. So that's everything that I had today. This is our, our team. We raised money for the Food Bank during the Christmas time and had some canned good donations, but any questions, any further questions?
Yes.
Yeah, some of the comments that were made earlier about joint, joint marketing and joint funding, you know, the TDC, the airport, obviously, I like that slide four that you talked about, all the partners that you have and, and, and we've been, continuing to try to make efforts to kind of do away with silos so that our, all of our departments are talking. So whether it's the airport, TDC, Economic Development, DRS and Building Department who really are right there at the front line of economic development kind of
Absolutely.
they can be helpful or not. So you, you know, obviously ours are pretty helpful, so we'll make sure that continues. Forward Pinellas, you mentioned, PSDA, Tampa Bay Partnership, all of those groups that, that really have, many of them have some real marketing specialists there that are really good. And for some, it seems to me that there's a way that we could pull that talent together in task force form on issues that we're talking about that are relevant to Pinellas County.
Yeah.
Whether it's finance specialists, whether there's real estate specialists, whether there's marketing specialists, some really bright people
Yes.
that could be tapped into. I don't mean for, I don't, I don't have that predefined project, but there are times where it's out there, right under, right under our nose sometimes in terms of how we can work together and, and bring real strength to, to any efforts that we're making, so.
No, absolutely. And it's been done in the past for like the Republican National Committee for, you know, for the Super Bowls and everything else. These groups all come together and make that happen, but, you know, I agree, we need to look at it. We're looking at it. St. Pete and their Grow Smarter campaign has brought together the marketing people within the major companies in St. Pete, but I think you're right, Team Tampa Bay concept.
Yeah, you have, you have addressed a lot of that on that slide. I think that, that kind of thinking needs to really
Exactly.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilt?
Thank you ma'am, Chair Mike. Thank you for your great work, you and your team. You've got a great team, but a small team. Grew a little bit this year for the SBE, but
Yeah, thank you.
again, thank you for the great job you're all doing on that. The community feedback has been outstanding and you continue to be very collaborative in the outreach session coming up. I think it's going to be
Yes.
very rewarding as well. I want to go back to the AirCo issue. I think in the previous, in the airport presentation, is that 100 acres I said?
Depends on how you count it. What we've got is 10 acres right now is zoned for hotels, Commercial General, so it's intended to be a hotel-restaurant site. But we've got two hotel restaurants going in at the, behind the Cracker Barrel and then over there to the west of Roosevelt. So we're looking at changing the land use and zoning on that to be the employment center with an M1 zoning that would allow us to have more flexibility in the use of that site and, and frankly, with our current code, would allow a bigger hotel and a bigger restaurant on the site.
But how many acres is it? Did I hear that correctly?
It's about 128, it's 130 with, so where the cart barn used to be. So if you add up every piece of every type, it's about 130 acres.
For, for what now? The AirCo?
For the AirCo.
Oh, AirCo, okay.
Yeah.
And given this location, and I know you mentioned some of the infill we'd have to do with the ponds, but have, what's our, our sea level rise projection? I mean, have we factored that in, not only for AirCo but for the airport as well?
I wouldn't know for the, the airport. I assume the master plan would, would definitely take that into account. But there at AirCo, the average elevation there is about eight feet
Okay.
and it, you know, it needs to be at least 10 for the, the occupied floor, so.
Okay. And finally, the other large pieces, obviously as Commissioner Justice said, Tropicana Field. What's our involvement there? You know, we, you know, we own
Yeah, that's true.
trop to save the citizens a million bucks in taxes and it's in the CRA as well. Do we have any other direct engagement with them in terms of, you know, making sure that whether it's an employment center or housing, you know, what they put there or?
Oh yeah, no, we're involved. The Chamber has developed, just recently formed a committee, the St. Pete Economic Development Commission actually formed a committee to look at the trop development and Brian Ald is actually on that committee, so it's helpful to have one of our players and if, if we develop within the next six, seven years, we're going to have to involve them unless they decide to leave earlier. So it's, we're, we're definitely involved with that. We work with the, closely with the city staff in their development of that, the two different plans that they have for the site, one with the raise and one without. So we were involved in those steering committees and, and continue to work with city economic development staff on that. That is one of the zones that we lobbied to have as an opportunity zone. So the trop field is entirely within an opportunity zone site that will have that benefit for investors. It's also in the central business districts of the, really the FARs are not going to be a problem. We can build anything we want on that site. There's sufficient density there to do it. So we're, we're very involved in that, forward to working with them. Great opportunity.
Historic, historic, yeah.
In fact, we're involved with UPC, which is right across, just outside of the zone, the, the property there, the 800 block that the company, the insurance company just bought from the, the city or is in final stages of doing that. They're going to have 150,000 square foot facility to bring all of their people together, but they're willing to build more if we find the right tenants. And then of course, we have to deal with that cost issue of, you know, that it costs more to build than they can get from rent, but we're in the process of negotiating with them, seeing what we can do.
Okay. And I know we've got a housing study coming up, but what are you hearing from employers that want to relocate here or here and trying to attract employees about affordable workforce housing?
Generally, you know, housing at all levels is tough. I mean, you know, people, the executives complain that they can't find the home that they want in this area. It's just, it's difficult because we have a lot, the vast majority of our housing stock is that post-war retirement home, stuff in the center part of the county and then the, you know, the more expensive homes along the waterfront. But there's not a lot of available space to put new housing except for high-rises and condos and apartment blocks. And if you're not looking for that product and if you can't afford the prices that that product is going for, which tends to be on the high end, then, you know, the affordable entry-level workers and those in that 80 to 120% of the median income have a hard time. But we still hear complaints from companies that, look, I got to live in Avala or, you know, wherever and commute in and that's, that's not real helpful either. So if they're not willing to live in a condo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Lyon.
Lunchtime.
It's only 11:30.
Well, so do we, what's your pleasure? Do you want to go through developmental review and building services and then have lunch?
Should be pretty quick.
I noticed
Hour three.
Right. And building services is only eight slides, I counted them too.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm before you this morning, again Blake Lyon, the first time as the Director of Development Review Services combined with Buildings, so Building and Development Review Services. Many of you that have been around for a little while knew that that was part of our organizational structure several years back and we are bringing the team back together. So I'm happy to, to be here and, and stand on my soapbox. Well, let me change that a little bit. Maybe we stand on my rooftop. We're building, we're talking about building service. So I'm standing on my rooftop now and really advocating for and telling you about a lot of the really talented men and women that we have representing you and working with our customers and constituents. And I have a number of the leadership team that are here with me this morning, but they are the representation of the dozens more that are in their trucks, out in the field, behind the front counter and in the office addressing that. So I'm going to take a minute and introduce you to the team and I want to start first and foremost with our code enforcement folks. If you guys would stand up. Jude Reason is our Division Director. Behind him to, to your left is Gina Barudy. She is our Operations Manager. And then we have our two supervisors, Shawna Overlay and Keith Vargas. Keith is our North County Supervisor and Shawna is our South County Supervisor. So we've got some great opportunities and I look forward to sharing some of the work that they've done over the last year and we've made some monumental strides and I'm excited to share that. The next group that I wanted to introduce you to is Development Review Services, who's led by Gene Crossen as our Division Manager. Cliff Still oversees our environmental group. Randy Ayers is our professional engineer overseeing our engineering group. And our lady in red, the one who is managing kind of our front-of-house stuff is Leila Carradine and she oversees a lot of our permitting technicians. So that's that group. And then finally, again, bringing the team back together is our Building Services folks. 10 Days on the Job is Evelyn Spencer as our new Building Division Manager. And I'm happy to announce, I believe, that she is our first female building official for Pinellas County's history. So keeping in line with the new leadership that we have on the commission. We have somebody there as well. Dave Hottaschel is our Chief over our Mechanical and Plumbing and he's also our Project Lead for the Acela Project, so we're happy to tell you a little bit about that. And then behind them, Tom Ross is our Chief Plans Examiner and John Segretti is our Chief over Building, which is more the structural side and Electrical. The one gentleman that we didn't have here for you today, he's attending to a parent in need is Jim McKellen. Jim was our Innen Building Official and one of the people who was instrumental in keeping Building Services moving forward in the last several months as we brought Evelyn on board. So thank you folks for being here. So thank you folks for being here. Typically when I make comments and provide this opportunity to discuss with you, I really like to focus a little bit on a theme. And the theme that I wanted to share with you this morning was really one of situational awareness and you as leaders and policymakers and directors understand when, in your global thought process, the importance of that situational awareness. And it really gets highlighted in the work that these folks do and the work that we do as a group because we find ourselves in a very interesting spectrum where we're trying to deal with citizens, customers who have wants, preferences, desires for certain things that we have an objective of, of working with them from a customer service standpoint, but we also have an obligation of looking at things from a regulatory context and we try to find a balance and we try to emphasize that situational awareness so we can see and our folks in my opinion do an excellent job of trying to present options and opportunities and ways to be in compliance and come forward and find ways to, to bring projects forward. And then we look to work with our partners, whether that's our colleagues in planning or economic development or public works to find solutions and ways to move that forward. So when we look at the larger context of the folks that are represented, on the building side, we have the plans examiners. Those are the folks that are diving into the technical side, looking at the, the blueprints and the plans that are coming forward and making sure that we have accurate representation of those plans that then carry out to our contractors who actually build those, those projects. We have our permit technicians who are the front counter folks that are dealing with a lot of that interaction and the face-to-face and the intake process. And then we have our inspectors that are broken out by various different trades and working to make sure that we are holding to those life safety standards that are critically important in the work that they're doing. And then the right half of that screen is more of the DRS, the site planning review, talking about the different components and how those different pieces of the puzzle fit onto that property. And as you've heard a little bit this morning, there's, there's a lot of constraints, there's a lot of infill opportunities, there's redevelopment opportunities, there's a lot of complexities that come along with that. And so this is that group of, of folks that really try to be creative and identify ways to help our design professionals look for opportunities to, to build that and ultimately materialize in a project in that regard. And then code enforcement and many of you have heard over the last year, we've made a very concerted effort to really educate and inform the folks that we're engaging with, to go out and talk to them and make sure they understand what the rules requirements are, what the expectations are, to put a friendly face, to put a nice face on it and work with them to come into voluntary compliance. And then when we get to the few that really aren't able to achieve voluntary compliance, then we'll take a little bit more of the involuntary route and use some of the tools that are in the toolbox to address that through our local ordinance violation court or our special magistrate process. And so we've got folks that are doing that every day to serve your citizens. We spend a lot of time going through and these, this is just a smaller representation of the different core services that we're providing, but again, really with the focus on the education and information, allowing our opportunities to frame up those options to make sure that they're invested in the decisions that they make, that they understand the implications that come along with those decisions and then documenting it, whether that's through the reviewing of the plans, the issuing of the permits, the archiving and the record keeping that goes along with that, making sure that they're going through and obtaining the necessary inspections, you know, documenting whether those have passed and failed and communicating that effectively, ultimately allowing them to get into their building and occupy those spaces and, and go about either conducting their business or living their lives. And then we have some of those needs to, to induce enforcement and seek compliance in that regard. It's not advanced, oh, sorry, jumped too far. All right. There's a lot of information here. My hopeful takeaway for you all is to think through and see kind of the growing trends in, in the economy, in, in the business as it's, as it's portrayed on the last seven years. And so we see that continued growth, that continued volume and we make an effort to identify opportunities and areas for efficiencies, but we are doing a lot of work and trying to, to, to meet the needs and the expectations of our citizens and of our business community. And I'll talk a little bit in a couple of slides about some of the things that we're doing to try to implement some of the efficiencies there. When you, that's for building services. As you shift over to, jumping, sorry, Development Review Services, you start to see a little bit more of, and these again are a couple representative examples. The one that may look to be some of the smaller stuff is the pre-application, but this is a really critical piece in this. This is the folks that are coming in and getting early access to information that are beginning to design their projects and it's really critical and we put a high level of interest and expertise in that room to try to give folks early decision-making process that really can help shape the timeline and the process that they go through throughout. So it's important that we do that. It's a complimentary service that we do right now and we put a lot of investment from our staff resources into that. And you see the trends. I put the right-of-way utilization permits on there as well because it was a question that Commissioner Long had last year. I'm thankful to say we do have a second member supporting that effort based on your support of our group and so now that effort, as you can see, it continues to be a very large share of what we do now has two individuals and it doesn't rest entirely on, on one person's shoulders. These are a few of the, the key components out of the Development Review Service side. Again, the zoning and permitting issues, you can see the continued growth and trends on the left side of that screen to talk quite a bit about the efforts. I'm happy to say that in that context, we still serve, are able to serve a large majority of our folks that are coming into our office in less than a 20-minute wait period and that's really our target. So we're up into the high 80, low 90 percentile where we're able to get folks in and moving around. Yes, sir.
Blake, of that numbers that you're showing there, rough percentage of commercial versus residential, would you say? Just, again, just rough.
You know the difference, the breakout?
Seventy to thirty, seventy percent residential, thirty percent commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Seventy.
That's good.
And, and one of the things that we're trying to get more transparent about, we've got some technology that's helping to do this, is we linked our cumatic system where folks come in and pull a ticket and go through the different stations to the website. So you can see the, the anticipated wait times, so folks have an idea of, of when they can come in and how long they need to wait to get to those services. And then we have a tracking system internal that allows us to make sure that we're serving those folks and all the managers have that up on their screen so they can see if somebody's waiting for longer than that time, it sends an alert, they can jump in and help to address those issues. And then on the site plan side, our peak year was 2016, FY16, but we do still see a plateau there and we continue to provide that service across the board.
One other question, Blake. Seems like, you know, when you talk to folks out there, that a lot of the frustrations come in sometimes from, we've got our groups and then you've got the representative that comes in and talks to you and then you've got the actual client that's sitting at home, whether it's a business or a resident. And sometimes things are said that don't always get back to the client. So there's a new system that you all are putting in place, it seems like that we'll be able to gather that information, that conversation so that we can stay in better touch with that end user, so to speak, so that that mis, well, figure pointing if you will, doesn't, we can kind of minimize that. I mean, it really is about keeping the contractor accountable.
We've done, we've done a couple of things already to that effort and we've got a couple more that are coming. The two, the couple that we have done initially, those pre-application meetings, we have a checklist format that goes through that has all the submittal requirements and as our staff is sitting there with, with the applicant, they can go through and they can identify what they would need to have a complete submittal. They can then take that checklist back to their design professionals, back to their offices and work off of that checklist. And then there's a third column on there where they can bring in and when they sit with that front counter person, they can go through and so it's a consolidated effort to make sure everybody's working from the same information. We've also been communicating, when we have comments that come out of that, we are communicating both with the applicant, which may be the engineer of record, but also including the property owners in that communication to address some of the concerns that you raised. As we get into the implementation of Acela in the remainder of this year and into next, one of the things that we'll do is being automating that a little bit. So as we get the information that comes in and we control that, we can push that information. They also will have a, a more robust citizen or public access side so they can see where things are in much more real time and they can self-serve. And so that's part of one of the things that we're trying to look at as a department is we are the, the holders of that information. How do we accurately communicate that out? How do we let people to the extent they can be or choose to be, be self-sufficient on obtaining that information? So when we get somebody who calls into our office and says, why can't I get an inspection on this particular issue? And our response is, sir, we offer a next day inspection. Well, my contractor told me, he's been waiting two weeks, I can't get, and we go back through the system and we say, well, they only requested the inspection yesterday, we're scheduled to be out there this morning. We can help bridge that gap of misinformation, we can allow them to self-serve, we can allow that property owner or that homeowner to come in and, and look at it for themselves and, and access it.
I think it's about each, each partner being accountable, whether it's us or the contractor. So I think these are good, that's a good communication. Thank you, appreciate it.
Certainly. I want to take a minute to, to, to talk a little bit about this because I know this is a point of interest and concern in, in years past. Code enforcement, you all have supported and helped us with getting additional staffing levels there. We feel like we've put that to work. There was concern a couple of years ago where the average response times were ordering on about two weeks, so about 12 days to do that. With some of our change in service delivery model, we were able to reduce that a couple days. The additional officers that you provided us allowed us to break that down to about a nine-day response time and you see that in the FY17. We have made a monumental shift in the last year and that is principally responsible, again, for some of the approach and the outreach that we've done on the enforcement side, but there are two notable technology improvements that I wanted to mention to you. One is we were working with our partners in BTS to do a remote server, so we were allowing our field functionality, our ability to connect wirelessly to do some of our, our, our work. At the start of it, it was about a 45-second delay for keystrokes and so it was, it was painstaking to even just type your name. And, and we were able to do the remote server that, that reduced that significantly. Probably the one that bears the most attention is the electronic citation. We had folks that were going out, doing their inspections to the property, having to return back to the office, handwrite or type out a, a violation notice, carve and copy, if you make a mistake, you gotta start over, you're doing the whole thing, go back to the property and issue that citation. We've now, through the efforts of one of our key staff members, have made that electronic. They can do what could have taken them anywhere from two to three hours, they can now do in less than five minutes. So we have that ability. It's shown so much positive dividends already that we've seen utilities come on board, we've shared some of the technology with the city of Clearwater and we're really, the county attorney's office, the clerk of the court, a lot of those folks are embracing this and really looking at it. They, they get about 400 of these citations a month and so we're working on trying to quantify that, but I, I can safely say we are saving the county hundreds of hours of personnel time just on that technology and that implementation.
Madam Chair, can I ask a follow-up on that? That's an awesome story. So what tech are you using? And you said you, one of your staffers came up with this?
Yeah, we, we reached out originally to BTS, there were some challenges. One of our, one of our staff members, a gentleman named Steve Parker, took it upon himself and said, I'm going to figure this out, this can't be that difficult and went home and he has a little bit of educational background in the IT side and he literally programmed a, a fillable PDF portion of it. We took some time and he created that system so you can go out to the property and you can have that information typed in. If you, multiple violations on that same site, it carries that information over if you want to start it, but he just, he just figured it out. I mean, I can't, I can't describe it any other way than he just had a passion behind it and he had a motivation and he sat down and he did it and he figured it out. We tested it, we ran it through. Jude, Gina and others have really been kind of championing that. We worked with the, the clerk of the court, with the county attorney's office. We had to rewrite the administrative orders to allow for some of this. Then we went back and we invested in thermal printers that the sheriff uses in their vehicles and now they can print them right out in their vehicles. And so we've done a number of things like that that have really proven to be a, a strong advantage. There's a couple of other things I wanted just to, in, in that dynamic. So if you now, this is a prototype, but if you receive a violation, we have a door hanger that can go on that and, and the electronic printout goes right in there. And you'll see that on here, if it's an enforcement effort, we have the badge that implies a little bit of the enforcement component. There's a QR code that takes you right to, giving you the opportunity to know where the, the court is so you can address this very issue. But one of the things we realized, there's also an opportunity in our service delivery model, we have a courtesy notice and this is something that we're, we're in, using where if we get called out on one particular issue and we go out to that property, the goal is not to be heavy-handed and identify all these issues and we were feeling like people were being targeted or, or feeling like we were too heavy-handed. So now we have the door hanger that says, hey, we're out here to address this issue. We noticed a few other things, we want to bring these to your attentions so that you can address all of these things, but it really is just a courtesy effort. And then probably more importantly, and this is something that we don't always do enough, is we say thank you when they're done. We, you know, we're out there, you've gone through, you've, you've brought your property into compliance and we've now, you know, you've got a clean bill of health if you will and this is, you know, our effort to say, thank you, we appreciate the efforts that you've done to, to bring that because it, it really lifts all boats and it really helps us to, and they feel good about coming into compliance and accomplishing that. So there's, there's quite a bit of effort and attention that have been paid and all the very positive ones you can see are, excuse me, are branded with the Pinellas County logo. So when we're positive, we got the logo on there and when, when there's something that may be a little bit more of an enforcement side, okay, we're going to minimize that and kind of, and, and pull back on that a little bit. The other thing that you all supported with us recently in the last several months in the fall was talking through the different lien settlements, foreclosures, demolitions, things of that nature. We have prototyped a lien reduction, we're going to be bringing it back to you for consideration, but we've seen a tremendous uptick in bringing this to people's attentions, identifying the issues, them coming into voluntary compliance, settling out those because we have a very clean methodology that makes folks understand that we're being fair and consistent across the board. For those that are not in compliance and are not able to, we've been working with our counterparts in the county attorney's office, happy to say that we now have, I believe it's eight properties that have been brought forward that are going through the injunction process, some of them that are more egregious, we have a few that have gone through a demolition that not, that thankfully, we haven't had to go in and demolish through our efforts. We've actually got either banks that have now come in through the foreclosure registry and we've, we've had some banks that come in, we've had some of those properties turn over hands and sell and the new owners coming in, but we've been really working with the county attorney's office to, to follow through on the initiative that, that you all gave us that direction for in the fall.
I have a question about that. Is there any way that our staff can look at those properties when somebody calls in and says, I have this person next to me, so they can know right away that it's one of the ones that you're working on and it's a repeat offender?
Absolutely, and we're, we're trying to develop these, so we're happy to take those thoughts and considerations as we build this program a, a little bit more. So we have been starting to track those when we make those referrals to that, so we are happy to include, you know, your staff in those so they can see that. The other opportunity is if we need to expand our licensing on the foreclosure registry, so if they want to go in and research, we can certainly, I mean, there's opportunities that we can talk about in that regard. And we have condemnation notices and things like that where we're starting, so it's just placed on a door of a property if, if there's a need to go out and, and address some of those concerns. All right. Couple more and I'll get you, we'll get you to lunch. We are very. proud of the fact and continue to really work to hold the standard of next-day inspections for our building services. That is, you know, the creme de la creme, if, if you will, with the building side, and we make a, a very strong and concerted effort to, to provide that to our customers. It has come with some challenges and trying to team up with some contract providers, and what, this is an opportunity for us to work through some of those as we bring the team back together under BD RS. But we also offer expedited plan reviews. That's really a key component when it comes down to two of the priorities that you've given the county. One is, you heard earlier from Mike Midell, is the economic development projects and prioritizing those and trying to move those through. The other is the affordable housing side of things, and so we make sure and effort to expedite those plan reviews and, and keep them moving. The, several others are CIP projects, school district projects, that, that also can qualify. We have quite a bit, in one of the earlier slides, we have a little over 50% of our permitting can be done online, so it, it limits the ability or the need for folks to come into the office. They can do a lot of that, that's provided on, online services. As I mentioned, we do use contract services. We also provide contract services to several communities, Oldsmar, some of the Bel Airs, where we're providing some assistance to them. So we try to make sure that we can assist our colleagues and our partners in those regards. One of the big pushes from the development review services side is we are the implementation side of the new land development code that you all adopted in, in the fall of last year, that got implemented in January of this year. And so we become the, the implementation side. So we're certainly training up our staff and working through, communicating that. One of the things that we did was we went out and had thumb drives and everything preloaded. So as folks came into our pre-application meetings, or if we were in the counter and they wanted to get access, early access to that code, we provided that to them electronically, and they were able to come back and work with our design professionals to try to make sure they could address and meet that code requirement. So, I lost my signal here, so I'm not entirely sure what the next thing is, but that, that really is the opportunity for us to conclude, and we're really excited about the direction we're going, the support, and appreciative and grateful for the support that you have provided for us. And so I'll conclude my comments there and answer any questions you might have.
We lost it too, but still up in the bank.
All right. Yes, sir. That's right. I'll, I'll just, that's on me. I, I can confirm for you, woman, I got a hard copy right here, so. The last slide I had on there was a thank you slide. So I, I did want to take actually a minute, there's one other that I, I didn't have a chance to address. The Acela civic platform that we talked a little bit about, that is currently in the data migration phase of what we're doing. So we have processed, mapped everything out. We've talked about the efficiencies that we want to achieve. We're going through the data migration, getting all of the stuff out of the permits plus legacy system, making sure it translated appropriately to the new system. Then we'll be going through and validating that effort, ultimately end up in user acceptance training. There are still some variables, so I don't want to overpromise, but we are ahead of schedule a little bit right now. We would anticipate, if all continues to go this smoothly, that we're looking at probably a fall implementation, October, November timeframe. If there are some complications that arise, and we keep to the original anticipated project schedule, it'll probably push into the first or second quarter of 2019. But we're, right now, we're, we feel very optimistic about what we can achieve there. The last thing I wanted to mention is we are making an effort on all three divisions to, to get out into the community to talk about ways to get that access to information, to get, increase the education piece of it. That takes shape in a variety of different ways. It could be community meetings. I was at the town hall meeting down in the Seminole community around the Tides earlier this week to different workshops and events. I know, I know Shawna, for example, was at our Leomin community where they had the point in time where they were doing the homeless counts, and we were trying to provide those access, going out to different job fairs. And so we are trying to make sure that our presence is out there, that people know how to access us, how to ask those questions, and get good information. So I appreciate your time this morning. Thank you for all your continued support, and happy to answer any further questions.
Yeah, just two quick questions. One, talked, something, mentioned that it's about 70, 30 residential to commercial. So some of the commercial plans that come in seem to be typically larger, more complex. Do we have any kind of ombudsman system that can help larger, complex projects through the system?
At the moment, no, but your, your question is very timely because we've been discussing that with the new county administrator, with Jake Stowers, RACA, on that very option, and trying to figure out where, both at a, at various different scales, whether that's small business support or large business, and looking at a model that might help achieve that.
Obviously, sometimes that's expansion, more jobs, you know, that kind of thing. So the second thing is on second trips, or third trips, or fourth trips, that plans come back and, and allegedly get new, you know, new comments. So obviously, the first time the plans come through, you give them 20 comments, and they go and they address those comments, and then they come back, and now there's 20 new comments. It's not, I said allegedly, so I'm not sure it's always one side or the other. Where do you see the external problems in that, and where do you see the internal issues with that? Where are we, I mean, I know sometimes it's got to be us, sometimes it's got to be them.
It's both.
So, yeah, what are the issues that seem to create the most problems on that, and are we addressing that?
We, we absolutely are aware of that concern and have put some concerted thought and effort and continue to do so to address that. You, you're absolutely right, it's, it's both sides of the equation in that discussion. Talking about it internally, one of the things that we're really working towards is making sure we, again, get good information, that as we bring those comments from, DRS serves as kind of the clearinghouse. We have some of that information that's being reviewed internally and some that we, that we push out to the other departments. We're trying to take a more concerted effort to look at our consolidated reviews and comments that are going out to make sure we're not having any internal consistencies before we send that information out. And then as that information goes out, and they're working on those, we're also inviting them to come in, to, to meet with the staff that have made those comments, to go through them face-to-face to make sure there's a clear understanding of what the expectation is and how they can respond to those comments in hopes that we're not generating new comments. Oftentimes, where the new comments come into play, it depends on what kind of responses they're doing. If they're making changes, we make a very concerted effort not to say, "Oh, we missed something, here's something more," unless that's truly an absolute need, and sometimes that's the case. But, but if we're not doing that, the goal is to say, "Okay, is there something that generated in the change in the response that warrants a new comment?" And, and we'll look and address those. We've also made a concerted effort, and it happens more often than I care to admit, where when folks are coming in and resubmitting and we're pushing back comments, we'll now call to their attention, "Hey, this is the second time or the third time we've made this comment, and it's still gone unaddressed." And so we're trying to call those out in a meaningful way so that we can make sure that the, the business owner, the property owner, whoever's at stake, has some quality control on their side of the equation as well.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. And I, I just, from my perspective, that, your group and that, that whole department is such a critical component in the implementation side of economic development. And I just, that, that culture of, you know, making things happen, but you got to check it. If we make a mistake and miss something, you got to bring it to their attention. You don't want to let it go, because that's what our job is. But I think to, to know, to let them, everybody know how important their job is in that respect, I think, you know, it creates a real sense of urgency, of, of attitude, or whatever it needs to be to, to really make a difference. So thank you. I know it's tough because there's a lot going on. You showed some numbers there that are going through your office, but thank you for that, for those efforts.
Other questions, comments? Yes?
Very quickly, thank you Blake for the presentation. You hit on Excel, and I always try to keep this straight, but is that the successor to permits plus, or is permits plus?
It is the successor, but we're several iterate, so to use the iPhone scenario.
Of course.
We're, we're working on, you know, permits plus is probably an iPhone two.
Wow.
And, and Acela is an iPhone X. And so there have been several iterations in between the two, and so there, they are, you know, they are a parent-child relationship. There is a relationship between the two, but there's several generations in between.
So can you even make that upgrade?
We can, and we are. And, and so David's been instrumental in, in kind of leading the business side of it. We've, we've matched his resource internally with both OTI primarily, but with some support with BTS as well. And then we have Acela's team in-house here, and we have an implementer, Redmark. So there's a, there's a team that is meeting weekly to, to kind of be the steering committee or the efforts there, and then we have some bigger support. So there's, there's a lot of energy and attention because there's a high level of expectation and there's a high level of value that we really want to see come out of it.
You're going to get a whole lot more functionality.
Absolutely. Everything from the, from our internal, on the mobile office side, and being able to do that. And really, one of the critical pieces, and it speaks back to Commissioner Eggers' point, is the, the external ability to get access to that information, to see things in a more real-time opportunity and to share that information out.
You said you're shooting for fall of this year?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Optimistically, October, November is where we think we can land. Again, the project schedule didn't anticipate it until, till 2020, but right now, things hold true. And we've got a couple of key pieces of that that we just need to make sure.
Well, Godspeed on your journey.
I appreciate that.
And thanks to you and your staff, you know, y'all do an outstanding job. Have you fully vetted Mr. Crosson, though?
Oh, absolutely.
Has he been fully vetted? He's a Lakewood Spartan, so.
I, yeah, I, I don't hold that against him.
Awesome, man. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, anything else? Hey, thank you very much. Let's break for 30 minutes, come back here at 12:40.
Yes, Madam Chair?
Thank you.